Good evening, everyone. Sorry that took a few minutes longer than we anticipated. We are going to start a work session. Some representatives from Corso Chevy Chase are here in the room as well as online. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. So tonight was going to be kind of a update presentation on where things are with respect to demolition and all that great stuff and the wonderful project that we're all anticipating. What I wanted to do is just get a sense, get your presentation and then kind of open it up as well if there's any questions from council members with respect to the Declaration of Covenants, the garage lease, the construction management agreement, just in case there's any questions because I don't know how long we'll have a Corso representatives with us. And then we'll save the rest of our discussion later in our agenda. So with that, I'll turn it over to you guys. If you want to come up here as well, you're more than welcome.
Yeah, I've got it tonight, if that's okay.
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay, great. So I'm Kelly Panner. I'm the Vice President of Construction for Gallery Living. In the audience also representing Gallery is Tim Gary, President and Owner and CEO, as well as Rolf Reynolds, Senior Developer on my team. In addition to Gallery Representatives, we also have Steve Van Dorp with JFW. They are Construction Management Team and Local Partner in Chevy Chase. And they've been helping us, you know, get started with all of our construction activities. So I just want to say thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to provide you guys an update, let you know what we've been working on and what's to come for the rest of the year. We've been working very closely with Todd and Dave and Tolbert and Jason, you know, to put together some of these agreements that you're going to be discussing later in the meeting, the construction management agreement, coming up with communication plans going forward as we kick off construction activities on site. We do have a website with a page that we're dedicating to updates at corsochevychase.com. So going forward, you'll be able to to log in and get some of the updates as well as, you know, working with the town to update the crier. So we have an extensive communication plan that we're going to be rolling out going forward to make sure neighbors are aware of everything that's going on, as well as the town and any local jurisdictions. So to discuss further where we are with activities, we started abatement of the existing buildings in March. We have gotten extensive materials, you know, being tested and coming out of the building as soon as abatement is complete in May, we hope to actually start demo activities. So those activities we anticipate will last until likely October to take down all the buildings. To give you an update of where we are with permitting, once we get a construction agreement, construction management agreement in place, we will be submitting for permits with Town of Chevy Chase. We have submitted drawings, permit drawings as of April 15th to Montgomery County. So we anticipate a review time of approximately six months. We don't know. That's not an exact science. That's just based on history and our partners in Chevy Chase telling us what review time looks like right now. So the idea is that we would be finishing demolition in the fall and hopefully roll into construction activities once we get our building permit. Also, our tree protection measures will be implemented in early fall of this year. So we are, we are getting started. We anticipate, once we start construction, we are working with Davis Construction on this project right now. Our general contractor, we are anticipating about a 24-month construction duration once we get our building permit. So I know that was fast and furious and high level. But that's, that's where we are to date. Also, to let you guys know, the cell tower will be going back on top of the building as it was on the 4H Conference Center. So that will, that will be in place once we complete construction. It'll, it'll go, be going on top. So I know that's, that's, that's triggered some questions from the residents thus far and just wanted to confirm that in this meeting as well. Anything so far? Does that give you a good overview of where we are right now?
Yeah, that, that was very helpful. And thank you all for making this presentation coming here in force. Nice to see you, Jim. Thank you for coming up from Atlanta to be here. The, I just make sure, when do you expect to file the permits? I just didn't quite catch that date.
So we, we did submit for building permit, May 15th.
Oh, you have submitted. Okay.
Yes, we did.
By, you will submit it on May 15th?
I'm sorry, April 15th.
April 15th, okay. Told it could take around six months. Okay.
I'm sorry.
So the idea in principle is you'll be able to dovetail that you get your building permit immediately following the completion of the demolition, you can move from one right into the other. I guess that's your, that's your hope.
We'll submit for, we've already submitted our application for demo permit, but we can't receive that until we complete abatement activities. So we're hoping to get a demo permit in May, once we complete abatement.
Got it. Okay. The other thing I think, just to make sure for the benefit of residents, when you're talking about construction, you're only talking about the construction of phase one, correct?
That is correct. Phase one.
Okay. And again, for the benefit of residents, do you have any sense of how long it may be between completion of phase one? And when you'd be able to start phase two? We know there's an issue of having to fill up and demonstrate to the banks. We know it's a financial matter, but can you give us some rough kind of time span that you normally think might be?
I got in, but I had to enter a passcode.
If you wouldn't, just so that folks on, on the call can hear.
Kelly, I'll try to answer this question on the phase two start date. I'm Tim Gary. I'm the CEO of Foundry Corso. So glad to meet you guys. That is dictated by our financing. So we're working on a financing structure to where we can start phase two within six months of finishing phase one. It's just such a long duration for each phase of construction that the banks are more willing to allow us, till they're willing to allow us to start sooner. There is a few marketing requirements that we have to meet. So it's some pre-leasing requirements. So you will see us set up some pre-leasing office pretty soon after we finish the site work. So we'll do site work, then we'll set a pre-leasing office up. We're already taking a lot of names and contacts right now from our website. And some great, great residents.
I'm sure there may be some residents of the town who will end up staying in town by being able to move into your facility.
Right. Look forward to it.
Okay, that's, that's actually good to hear because I think we all anticipated it would be a longer stretch of time between the two phases.
And typically it is, but we're very fortunate with our success to have a large financial institution behind us that's allowing us to move a little quicker.
Very good. Okay. Thank you.
You mentioned that you were going to do your tree protection work in October or start the pre-protection. You don't do that during your demolition phase? I imagine you're going to have some heavy equipment in there. Would you not start the tree protection during, during, over the demolition phase as well?
We, we don't, we don't anticipate affecting any trees until we start site work.
Hello, my name is Steve Van Dorp with JFW. We are the Construction Management Team Assisting Gallery on this project. To answer your question, Rich, yes, we have worked out the demolition, actually the raise permit, so that all the buildings will fall upon themselves. So the demolition will be self-contained. And we've had this discussion already with Dave Walton and with Tolbert and the town folks about how we're going to maintain the fence in its current condition. So we don't need to do any additional tree protection measures in the short term. So then, once we get the stormwater management and sediment erosion control measures approved by the county, that will then kind of inform the additional measures we'll take at that time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? There were some security concerns or have been over the last year or so. Are there any specific measures that just for, again, for knowledge for residents that are going to be taken during this demolition slash pre-construction phase slash construction phase?
Maybe, maybe that's my question, but so Kelly, you can jump in and help me here with this one, but the activity is actually, from what I understand so far, the new activity on the site has kind of reduced some of the kids that were coming into the site. So the sooner we kind of, the more activity we have on the site, the better it is. We still have the cameras on site. So.
Yeah, that, that is correct. We, we have had less incidents. Montgomery County Police Department has been very responsive with us. And they were deterring a lot of people on site with their training with the fire department and police department, but we do still have cameras on site that we're monitoring. But yes, to, to piggyback on Tim's comment, the activity on site has definitely lessened any incidents that we've had. We've not had any major incidents.
Thank you. Does, do any of you have any questions about the either covenants, garage lease agreement, since we're here? The, the construction management agreement before I, go ahead, please.
Not so much a question, but just a couple of comments. The, first of all, I think the, having looked at it, appreciate in the garage lease, where you're putting the temporary facility for the town. That's very convenient, very close to Connecticut. Good to see it there and also quite spacious too. And the other thing which I think we paid attention to in looking at the construction management agreement, again, I just want to say this for the benefit of everybody. One of the things that we've noted from the involvement the town has had with the Purple Line Construction is that one of the most important aspects of it is always to try to make sure there are never any surprises. You know, it's, it's one thing if there's noise. It's another thing if there's noise when nobody thought there was going to be noise. And so the, the wording in the agreement as it now stands, it says, we're looking for a quarterly update on what you anticipate occurring in the following three months. And then also a special notice in the event that you know there's going to be extra noise or something that's going unusual, let us know. If we let residents know, usually everyone can get, get behind it, understand it, no big deal. But if they're surprised, then we all have a problem. So that was one of the things that we cared about a lot in the contract was to try to make sure that we're all on the same page, that good communication, minimizing surprises will help this be a lot smoother for everybody. Thank you.
The project, I just took a look at the website. The project notices that you have placed, there's two of them there now. Is that, is that about the level of detail that will be provided? Is it going to be a weekly update like this? Or?
I think it will. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, so we will attempt to, to part of your point exactly. We have attempted to identify the kind of the known things that we can foresee over the next six months right now. You know, we're still in, working with the general contractor to finalize that contract, but to the extent we can forecast through demolition, that a phase of work. Yes, the second, I don't know if you noticed, the second notice had a series of different activities that we would, second page, there's a series of.
Oh, so it's, you just keep clicking through. Okay. So that's something that will let residents know. Just don't read it. There's.
Another page to that. So that's kind of the cover sheet. So the consistency of message and the second page has some of the detail of the various activities that are becoming on site. So our idea is that, you know, thus far, thus far, it's worked terrifically to kind of interact with Dave Walton. He's been our point of contact on site and just letting him know so, because I know that he and John will be getting all the phone calls first, first response, right? So to the extent we can let you guys know that something's a little bit different, like there's going to be a crane on site or something like that, then you can anticipate, already know what, what's going on and field those questions. So we hope to continue to do that same format and as things evolve, to the extent we can project it, we've got kind of the baseline. And then as things occur, we'll send out heads up as best we can.
Wonderful.
Our goal is not only through to posting it to the website, but we understand that that can get posted through the town crier as well. So we think that's a really effective way to get out the message.
Great. And I would also like to say if there's comments or feedback on how you would like to see it, we're definitely open to that. So if you would like to see it formatted a different way, or if it's not intuitive, you know, to residents, we'll, we'll be glad to adjust as, as needed and, and welcome feedback.
Thanks.
Good. Maryland, can I jump in just real quick, clarify a question which posed? Tree protection, you'll see as part of the CMA tonight that there are certain exhibits and one exhibit is tree protection versus during demolition. It is, it just constitutes the fencing that's currently there. There's a diagram, one on the CMA is tree protection plans and one of them is tree protection during demolition.
Thank you, Todd. I missed that. Sorry about that.
Okay. Before I throw it over to the audience, see if there's any questions. Is there any questions here? Okay. Are there any questions from residents about the Corso project or? A lot of the neighboring residents had received these materials in advance, but we're opening it up to you. Okay. Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for, we look forward to this project. We're very excited about it.
Yeah. Well, thank you for having us and, you know, I really appreciate everyone's patience through the process. I remember when Barney and I first started talking about this, we were saying this is going to take two or three years and here we are. So we're patiently going through this, but it's going to be something that's beautiful and part of the community for a long, long time.
We look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you for persevering through the current financial issues in our country. So it's not so easy to arrange financing at the moment.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your time.
Great.
To stay around at all or we're good?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
But Kelly to stay here to answer any questions about, I think we probably don't need her, correct?
I think, I think we're all set. I'm getting the thumbs up, if you will, that Kelly's all set. So thank you. Appreciate it again.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kelly. Take care.
So dive right in and officially open the town council meeting. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We're going to start with the March Financial Report. Rich, whenever you're ready.
Rich, is your microphone on? Sorry.
Now it is. And we've received about, and we've received about 69% of our operating revenue. Last meeting, I talked about what I, we thought were going to be some shortfalls in our income taxes where we had budgeted about 3.65 million and expected. We still expect to get a little less than that, about 3.46. So we're about 190,000 short in our expected income tax receipts. However, we've made up for that in our reserve fund interest income. So we're still projecting about a $1.7 million surplus this year. Bringing up to speed on the Zimmerman expenses. We budgeted totally $450,000 for the Zimmerman Park, of which we were, we've gotten a grant for 337.5,000 from the, the county. So we've look, we anticipated spending 112,500 dollars out of pocket. Expenses are coming in a little less than that. So it looks like we're going to be about a hundred thousand dollars out of pocket. So we've been doing very well.
Thank you. Any questions for Rich? Okay. All right, Todd, whenever you're ready, the town manager's report.
Thanks. I'll just review some of the work of staff over the past month. Bear with me just a second. So over the past month, staff has been involved in several major efforts and projects, including tracking some of the proposed state law amendments during the recently concluded General Assembly Session, including those related to municipal regulatory authority, which did pass and is on to the governor for signature. The Governor's Jobs and Housing Bill, which did not pass, it died in committee. And then also some speed camera legislation, which would authorize municipalities without police officers or law enforcement agencies to deploy speed cameras if they chose to do so. That did pass, like I said, and it's on to the governor for signature and it'll be a topic of discussion for a future council meeting. Staff also assisted in analyzing and responding to the county's proposed workforce housing legislation. And we assisted with submitting testimony on the Bethesda Downtown Plan Minor Master Plan Amendment, which was in fact approved by the county council on April 8th with a five-year comprehensive review provision, which was recommended by the town and by other entities. In addition to those projects and efforts, town staff oversaw review of Corso's latest erosion and sediment control and stormwater management plans. We finalized also drafts of the garage lease agreement and the construction management agreement, which she'll review and possibly approve this evening. Staff also met with county transportation officials to discuss Capitol Crescent Trail, Surface Trail Phase Two plans. And we reviewed and commented on the latest iteration of the memorandum of understanding for use of town right away for that project. This was going to be a topic of discussion tonight, but MCDOT officials didn't get back to me. There were very, very minor modification I made to the latest iteration, just expanding and explicating the parameters of the responsibility for pavement markings, maintenance, pavement marking maintenance. But the review process at the county level takes quite some time. So we're waiting on getting comments back from the county. Staff also met with PECO officials along with Barney and Rich to discuss LED conversion and tariff options. I attended a meeting to discuss ongoing land use committee initiatives with Irene and Rich and Deed and Ingram. The staff completed the permit parking survey for the Public Services Committee. We continued Zimmerman Park renovations. We continued coordination with the County Department of Transportation and WSSC on potential Leland Street drainage improvements. We developed the proposed FY26 budget and organized and attended the budget work session. I submitted our annual ARPA report, which is due by April 30th, for expenses and obligations through March 30. And I produced the election issue of the forecast newsletter, which went to the printer this morning, continued planning for the 2025 town election and provided project support to town committees. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Todd. Does anyone have any questions?
Todd, can you tell us when the fence will go in on Zimmerman?
Yeah, I, I believe within the next month is likely. It's under fabrication. Not to get an exact date or get an update on how that's progressing. The fabrication shouldn't take too long. So I would expect within a month.
Okay, good. Thank you. I'll just repeat what you said last time. I think we all feel that Zimmerman just looks gorgeous. I mean, just that lawn and the way it's been done is fabulous. And we're looking forward to the dedication of the Scott Fossler Path on April 26th at 3:00 PM. Encourage residents to come hear that, but that'll be a really lovely ceremony. We now expect about 60 people or so to be there, including County Executive Elrich, several county council members, several members of the state delegation, and a whole number of residents and people who used to live in the town are coming back for it. So should be, and also several members of his family. So it'll be a very nice occasion.
For sure. Great. Any other comments? All right. Thank you, Todd. We'll now open this up for public comments. There's a lot of folks here today. So I want to just mention that we're, we're going to be just hearing comments. We, we received your, your email earlier today. It won't be a discussion as much as just hearing you. So go ahead. Yeah, sure. You raised your hand. No problem.
I'm Deborah of Almer and I live at 7202 44th Street. And I've been living there. Actually, I'm living in the house I grew up in. And after living in California, I moved back. So I've been living here since 1997, after having grown up in the house I'm living in. And I love my town and I love my community. And my remarks here pertain to the town neighbors list serve. And I, I agree with the town that the town neighbors list serve is a private list serve and not, and not a, an arm of the town government. However, I think the town does promote and endorse town neighbors when the town crier comes out every week and there's a link to it. So I want to address this issue. Town neighbors, it's a private list serve, but it serves a public purpose. If there's a missing cat on my property, town neighbors. If, if I, if I have an automobile to sell, town neighbors. There's a public purpose involved in providing information and building community. And, and this, this is important to our entire community. The problem is, and I want to give Wicca Davidson, the moderator, some credit because it's a difficult job to moderate a list serve. And she's done it for many years, sometimes with help. When Ann Wild was here, she helped. But I, I think there's a problem in the way the moderator deals with list serve members. I'm probably the only person who's ever been totally and forever banned from posting on town neighbors. And I won't go into detail as to how it happened, but when I feel I'm being treated unfairly, I don't just stay silent. I, I do state my case. And, 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 you know, it all goes down to a discussion about problems with misdelivery of, of mail, which is a common problem. And I had a new incident to report on that subject and I was not allowed to post. And we had emails back and forth and one thing led to another and I've been banned and I feel like I'm being isolated, shunned and gaslighted. If, and I think the content of the list serve also suffers. The, the problem is the moderator has, and she's taken it on herself to do this, but she has a very difficult job to moderate all these messages. But I think if even one list serve member is treated badly, this is bad because it has a chilling effect on other list serve members. So my request to the town council is very simple. I, every, every, every week, the town crier posts a link to the list serve. I want that to stop. And I will say if, and, and, you know, I welcome anybody who wants to help mediate this dispute to volunteer, whether you're on the town council or in the audience or anybody else. But it's to the point where I can send the moderator of the list serve, Wicca, an email and she simply will not respond. And, and I've been going through this. I've made all kinds of proposals, limit how many messages I can post in a week. You know, let's start with just one message and I know, and, and I've apologized to her being rather abrupt in some of my communications with her. But the problem is she will not sit down and she won't meet with me in person. She won't talk to me on the phone and she won't even answer. She won't talk to me on the phone, and she won't even answer my emails. And this, like I say, it's about me, but it also sent the chilling effect to other list serve members who might have differences of opinion, but they feel, you know, they don't want to anger the moderator. So the town should not be endorsing this behavior. Again, I'm looking for a solution. I'm willing to acknowledge my mistakes. I'm willing to be reasonable, but I just, this, this business of being banned, basically isolated and shunned, and I feel gaslighted. And she said, she tells me it's like forever. It's not like just for a week or two or a month. It's like forever. And I'm not going anywhere. I'm not dead, and I'm not moving away from town. And I truly feel isolated, shunned, and gaslighted. So I, I hope the town will just take the simple step of taking that link from town crier to the list serve away unless and until I can get back my posting privileges, which will also send a message to other list serve members that, you know, maybe there's room for some give and take. And a little less authoritarianism as to how the list serve is run. I would like to post about that car that I want to sell, but it's very personal to me, and it's not something I can put do through somebody else. And what if I find somebody's wedding ring on my, in front of my house? What if I find somebody's missing pet? You know, the list serve itself, the content suffers. It's not just me. I'm speaking for myself, but it's not just about me. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? This is aside from the public hearing that we're having in a little bit. Is there anyone else? Okay, we're closing public comments. We'll move to the public hearing. So this is for a request for speed humps to be placed in the sixty nine hundred seven thousand blocks of Maple Avenue. It started with a petition filled out by a member, sorry, residents who live on Maple Avenue. Our vice mayor Barney Rush lives on Maple Avenue on the block and therefore will recuse himself from, from this, you know, from voting on, on this matter. So with that being said, happy to open it up for any public commentary with respect. Actually, what might be helpful is a quick summary of what's proposed. And then we can go ahead and have our, anyone who wants to make a comment. Is there a quick summary that can be provided? Do you want the, yeah, sorry, Joe. Thank you.
I can.
Two seconds.
Oh, my goodness. Anyway, my name's Joe Cootrom. The, the town's current traffic engineer. And at least regarding Maple Avenue, the proposal on the table is for two speed humps to be placed between Stanford Street and Thornapple Street. Right now, the location, the designated locations are adjacent to, let's see, six thousand sixty nine oh eight and seven thousand two. We are currently contemplating some adjustments on that seven thousand two location slightly to the north to see if we can resolve a situation with a gentleman who's having some mobility issues at seven thousand two. And he, he believes that the speed hump may have some effect on on his ability to get in and out of his home. So we're gonna, we're gonna see what we can do about moving that hump a little bit further north. But right now, it's, it's, it's the two humps and they've been marked on the street. And I don't know if the northern location, the seven thousand two location has been marked on the street yet, but nevertheless, that's, that's what's on the table. And as far as I don't know anything much about the state of the petition or anything like that. I'm not really privy to that, but nevertheless, at least physically, that's a, that's a description of what's, what's on the table.
Perfect, perfect. So happy to take any public comments with respect to this, this speed humps proposal, please. If you could, if you could just, yeah, thank you. Busy microphone.
I'm Betty Ferber.
If you could just state your name and address.
I'm Betty Ferber, and I'm at sixty nine oh four Maple Avenue, and I've been there almost forty seven years. So I have a lot of experience with traffic on that street, which has increased like where traffic has everywhere. I, I'm happy that this has been approved and going forward, but I have a request that is specific to my home. I don't think you have a picture of the plan. I mean, I've got it. But Maple Avenue goes straight down and then curves.
Wonder if that can be shown on the screen.
Okay, yeah. Maple Avenue goes, as you say, straight down, and you see where the little red line is? Keep going, and you see, I call it a curve, a dip, something in the road. But it, right in front of my house. For years, even before the traffic had increased, I had a problem because, you know, people coming from the north speeded, and I had to be extremely careful getting out of my driveway because you couldn't, I couldn't always see who was coming from the north going south. And I've been clipped. And, you know, it's just the nature of the location. I have a request that, and my thinking is, and I don't know if that, that where the southern hump is, often people, once they get over the hump, they speed up. You know, they, it, it slows them down, but they do speed up. And I would request that you consider moving that hump closer to where the curve in the road is. So between sixty nine oh six and sixty nine eleven. That's my request. Because I'm a little concerned about people speeding up after they've gone over the hump. I mean, that's it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Joe, just a quick question for you. Two speed humps were the, the ideal number for this segment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? And those online as well. I, I apologize if I won't be able to see a, a hand if a hand is raised. Yeah, please. Yes, of course, just so that we could, yeah, everyone online can hear it as well.
Good evening, Norm Bonneman at four two one two Thornapple Street. So if you look at the northern, most speed bump, immediately to the northwest of that. Question for Joe or any other individuals who have looked into this already. Do we know what the effect of water runoff might be from the addition of speed bumps to the street? And I mentioned that, given that we already have existing water runoff and drainage issues in that area. I'm, I'm not very familiar with the southern location, but in that northern proposed speed bump, there's already a lot of water that comes down Pine Street, comes down Maple, and instead of going north on Maple to the large storm drain at the intersection, tends to push through those two houses, it's seven thousand and seven oh two, and then runs into our backyard into forty two twelve, or four forty two fourteen Thornapple. We've already basically have some real like water drainage issues, given the topography of the land. And, you know, as someone who lives behind it, just want to make sure that we don't have an exacerbation of that, given the speed hump might.
Come on up.
Block some of that water.
Thank you.
It's not something I can particularly comment. That's if, this is actually the first time I'm hearing of this, but nevertheless, first of all, just as long as you understand that speed humps do not, do not get into the gutter at all. And generally, most of your flow is going to be in the gutters. So you probably have, it's probably a crown in the middle, in the middle of Maple. So again, I, I don't see, at least looking at it right now, I, I, I don't see any effect particularly on drainage, but that having been said, I know what you just said. There are some sort of special conditions going on here, particularly that flow off coming off a pine place. So my thinking is, remember, I just mentioned we're going to be doing an adjust, we're probably going to be doing an adjustment at the seven thousand two one. I'll make sure that, particularly when Dave gets back, we'll take a look at the drainage situation just to make sure that we don't have any. I, I don't anticipate anything, but at the same time, it, it, it's always a good idea to check, and we will.
What did you think about moving the, the southern one further down towards the, towards the bend in the road?
We've actually taken a look at that already. The, what we believe is that the location, the sixty nine oh eight is optimal from a standpoint of both spacing of the stop signs at either end, and also the fact that that curve already creates a slow point. We know from the speed data that we've seen on the street that speeds are at, are, are actually quite a bit lower at, in, in the vicinity of that curve. Again, it's possible that speeds may be a little too high for that curve, but nevertheless, the speeds are lower. We're not going to, we're not going to do very, we're not, we're not going to. That speed up isn't going to be very effective if we move it closer to what is already a slow point on the street, which is that curve. So it's from the standpoint of bringing it over to the other side of the curve, that doesn't really work either because we're getting too close to the stop sign at Stanford. And, and again, so we, we're, we're moving it into an area where the speed hump's going to have less and less effect. The spacing is, the spacing, we believe, is, is right with the two, and moving it closer to the, moving it closer to that curve is not going to be effective. It's, it's just, it's, it's going to be less effective than leaving it where it is. And for, actually, in other words, what I'm saying is we're better off getting it further away from the curve than closer to it. So.
We're a little bit out of order here, but are, are there any other public comments on this particular speed hump request? And those online. Sorry, Todd, if you, if you see someone, I can't see them, if they've raised their hand.
Right. No, I'll tell you. There's nobody right now who wants to speak.
Okay. Okay. All right, with that.
The note of, of procedural note, Irene, if the, if the council remand this back to, if they want to consider relocating the speed humps, or have Joe reconsider adjusting the northern speed hop, or this won't be able to proceed then to a decision tonight.
Understood.
Public hearings about this, this plan, exact plan.
Exactly. If we're talking about the discussions are ongoing, this might have been a little bit premature in terms of having a, a public hearing tonight, although good to hear all of the, the comments as well. Other than an adjustment there, and are, are folks having any other questions about what's being proposed at this time?
Yeah, I have some questions about, I mean, first of all, I just want to say that I am appalled that people are speeding down that street. I mean, the, the, the speed limit in the town is twenty miles an hour, and we're clocking basically every hour of people going over that, and sometimes significantly over that. And we have people who have mobility issues of, certainly that one resident pointed out, and people are going almost forty miles an hour down that street, which is just ridiculous. Have we talked about, I mean, I love speed humps, but have we talked about other measures as well to calm, and I don't know what those are, but to calm the traffic in the town. I mean, that's just, it's ridiculous.
Well, this, this is a discussion in, in response to a petition request that was put forth. I'm not, we have other tools in our toolkit in terms of the speed board monitor and, and, you know, other measures like that. There was a state law just passed. So, you know, there's other things going on here that, that, that could be working in our favor in terms of tools, but it, it, my understanding, in this regard, this is specifically responding to a request to install speed humps. I guess that begs the question of whether residents were particularly informed that there are other tools that could be used as a part of this, addressing this particular issue, but you, you would know more about what, what was communicated there.
I think that the focus for, for the residents was clearly the speed humps as being the most effective device that people could think of. More so, we did, there was discussion on our block about camera, not cameras, but speed boards, but there's a strong feeling, no, they really wanted to see the humps. They thought that would be the most effective. One other comment I'll make, which is just, it's not in respect to the decision, but in terms of timing, in my role as the liaison to the PSC, we will be discussing the prospect of improved safety on the hill at Stanford. That also involves potentially putting in speed humps. And Dave Walton has said, certainly, if, if speed humps are going to be put in, obviously, there's a desire to do it all at once in terms of the construction work. In regard to Stanford, if we discuss it tonight, we wouldn't have a public hearing until next month. That's the earliest we could have it. So as a practical matter, I, I, even if the council were to approve the plan tonight for Maple Avenue, the humps would probably not be constructed until after a decision is taken on Stanford. So that effectively means they wouldn't go in until sometime after the May council meeting. So if the council decides not to vote on this particular plan, instead take it up again next month, it doesn't actually make any difference practically in terms of when the speed humps would be constructed. They would still be tied together at the same time, but the work would be done on, on Stanford. The only question I have about this, back to Todd, is if the council doesn't take up both speed humps because one might be moved to a different location, can the council still take up one of the speed humps tonight if, lock it in, or is it best to wait and defer the overall decision on both humps until another council meeting?
In my opinion, it would be best to wait. I mean, these speed humps work in tandem with each other, and they're being recommended to be placed simultaneously to effectively slow speeds, and one won't do or be as effective. Joe can speak to a little bit more, of course, but I believe Joe would suggest these should be considered in tandem, and their location should be considered in tandem as well. So I would wait. Joe, do you?
I have a.
Yeah, there, there was a acknowledgement. Yes.
Okay.
Shaking of head. Yes.
I have a follow up question, and that is, again, I'm not trying to put the kibosh on the speed humps, but do we ever measure post installation of speed humps, what the impact is on traffic speed?
We have, we can, yes. We have. They are effective. They're very effective.
Yeah, please.
This wasn't all that, what you're asking wasn't all that feasible previously when we used to have to go out and rent traffic counters. The town has now bought its own, what's called RSU, traffic recording unit. So what you're asking now is actually, would actually be quite pretty mu, pretty easy to do. We now have our own counter, and we can just, you know, knock yourself out as far as curiosity goes. So, so if you want to find out what the effect of these things are, it can be done. So fairly easily now, and you don't have to pay anything extra. So.
Good question. Any other comments, questions? Oh, of course. Sorry, I didn't see you.
Since the town has these recording devices, I'm assuming you used it in terms of determining where to put the speed humps.
If you want to come up. Yeah.
That, that, that's not really quite correct. What, what the the test did on the street was to determine in a, at roughly a midpoint location, actually between the location of the two speed humps, somewhere in the center of the street, what the general pattern of speeds was. actually between the location of the two speed humps, somewhere in the center of the street, what the general pattern of speeds was. Uh, we have data that I was referring to, uh, near the curve from an earlier study that was done in 2017 by the traffic group. Uh, and we know from those, that they did two locations, we just did one. What we found is that the, the, uh, the, the speeds had actually gone up slightly since 2017. Uh, we, we, we were fairly close in, uh, location to the, uh, where traffic group placed their, their counter in 2017. The south end near the curve, uh, we haven't done anything recently with that. So, so what we've done is used a single test to basically lay out a layout, a, 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 a pattern for the entire block. And we know from spacing, spacing criteria, the two is what's appropriate. So the spacing that we came up with is, is, it's, it's sort of, uh, extrapolated more than, uh, but it's not really based on the, uh, the locations themselves are not really based on, uh, the data that comes from the speed. Uh, we, all we know is that speed humps are warranted, that's what we know.
So I'm going to make a, another request, and that is, since you have the capacity, um, first of all, uh, Joe, you mentioned that, um, I don't know if it's as a general rule, a curve tends to slow cars down, which is not my experience. And I am wondering whether, uh, since you have the capacity, you could actually determine whether that's the case. In other words, do it at where that, uh, curve is and, um, you know, see if, if it's, if it might be warranted to move it a little closer.
We, we, we can do that again, but, um, again, I'll go back to 2017 data. Um, is, is it possible to bring the, um, the, uh, the sketch back up of, uh?
Uh, yep.
Yeah, Joe, and I also think you may want to describe that, you know, we use the speed data to warrant the speed humps, but you're using criteria established by county and other agencies to, on the, on the determination of placement of these speed humps. It's not just the willy-nilly.
Exactly, thank you.
Uh, hold on.
The spacing is based upon, once, once you have the warrant, then you do the layout on the basis of the criteria that Todd is talking about. The, uh, various county and, county and national criteria, so. But nevertheless, going back to, um, uh, traffic group in 2017 did two, uh, two traffic studies. Uh, one was up, uh, very close to where the northern speed hump is. Um, and the, uh, the south one was at 6,000, 6,000, 6, 6906, almost directly on top of the curve. Okay, the 85 percentile speed at the northern location was four miles per hour higher than the one at 6906. As traffic approaches the curve, it goes slower. And at least that's what the 2017 study, studies showed. So we know that from 2017, but we can do it again, if that's, if that's the council's.
That's up to, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so I think now is a lot of information that we still need to gather. Um, and, uh, I, I, I'd be fine if there was a, a kind of a counter done at, at the curve, just so that we have that piece of data. Lot has changed in the entire world since 2017, so let's just get updated data on that if it's possible. And then by then, um, providing a recommendation, uh, for where the northern hump might go, uh, given as well the stormwater, um, concerns that were brought up as well. Exactly, yes, exactly, okay. So, um, thank you for, I realize it's not always easy.
One other question, and that, that is regarding, um, you know, every time we put in speed humps, somebody makes a comment about, um, how they either slow down or otherwise damage, uh, the fire equipment on big fire trucks. Um, I don't know if we have anything to say about that, that has not stopped us from installing speed humps again. But I think it's worth mentioning that we do hear comments about that from time to time.
Right, I think the, I, I, I don't know where I heard this, for every speed hump, it's three seconds more time added to emergency vehicle coming to your house. So, that's, uh. You're getting your workout tonight.
Yes, I am. Uh, the county, the county act, county fire and rescue people have done a study on that and it was, uh, seven seconds, seven seconds per, uh, for each hump. Uh, but yet at the same time, you know, the, they have not, uh, they have not blessed the idea of speed humps, but they know all about them. And, uh, they've ju- they just ask basically that, uh, you know, don't put them on, don't put them on main, main streets and, uh, and just be aware that it's, it, it, it's, it's going to slow down, it's going to slow down emergency response a little bit. So, uh, but they don't oppose them, so.
So if you could stay there for a second, I need you to address something. I just want to clarify, um, the, our interest or that residence interest in measuring speed at that, at that curve. Um, it's all fine that we, we can do that, but, uh, Joe, I think you need to speak to, even if the speeds are in excess. I, I believe you need to speak to whether or not you would even recommend that hump be located at that location. We can measure speeds there to determine what other measures can be undertaken. But I have a feeling, for some reason, and you can speak to this, that you would not authorize a speed hump at that curve, is that correct?
I would not.
So I.
I don't believe, I don't believe that was part of the request. I think it was just to have that additional information because as we talked about earlier, there are other tools in our toolkit. Um, so at least if we have the data that there might be an issue, we might need to figure something else out, um, for that.
For speed on placement, okay.
Yeah.
Be interesting, it'd be interesting to see, so.
Yeah. Okay, I think we're, okay, let's move, move on then, thank you all. Um, so the, the, I'm going to take the next three items, uh, council discussions and, and altogether, if you will, which have to do with Corso. There's a, uh, declaration of covenants, which of course was approved well, well, long time ago. Um, the garage lease agreement, um, so this comes to not only the temporary space, but also, um, when finally there's a, uh, whatever, a, a, area, and then the construction management agreement, um, that we provided this information to residents, but we haven't received any questions, uh, about it. Uh, and with the reason that we provided it all is just want to make sure that there was transparency. But then also if anyone had any additional concerns about, um, the, uh, just what was going to happen during construction. It's going to be 24 months of noise, it's going to be 24 months of delays. It's going to be 24 months of, you know, once in a while Connecticut Avenue is going to, you know, be slowed down because construction vehicles are going to be coming in and out with materials. So, um, uh, we, what, what is in our control is what's been put into these different, um, agreements here. So, um, opening it up for discussions and action.
You're Barney.
You're me.
Oh, I, since I signed the letter with the covenants, it would be a little bit rich for me to now say I have a problem with them.
I was going to say that.
I, 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 I thought, I think certainly the, the covenant standard.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Excuse me, sorry, excuse me. We, we just have to thank you.
I have no con- further comment to make about the covenants, they were extensively negotiated. The one thing I would remind my colleagues about, uh, which is, uh, we're very grateful to have. The reason the town has covenants directly with the developer is, and, and they are word for word exactly the same covenants that the developer has with the county is because if and when the developer, uh, or Corso wished to make a change, if the covenants were only between themselves and the county, then the town could participate and comment, but could not be, be, have to, it, 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 its approval would not be required. But because these covenants run, well, this, this set of covenants will also run between the town and the, in Corso. It means that if the developer wants to make any changes, they actually have to get the town's consent. So it is a substantial augmentation of our authority over the monitoring of the, of the project, uh, and, and compliance with the conditions that, uh, any such changes are proposed, had, we would have to approve. So anyway, I think it's all great, and we ought to just go ahead and prove it. And I thought the two agreements that I read through, I thought they were fine and they took account of the comments that we on the council had had. And, uh, I thought that the, the, um, temporary lease agreement, um, was well structured. And, um, as I commented before, I think the location of the temporary garage is about as good as we could possibly expect and a very, very substantial amount of space. Uh, and also I think we all noted, and I talked to Todd a bit about this, that the, uh, there's no automatic renewal. Uh, so the town has to be aware that a three-year period is coming up and we have to renew. But it is our exclusive right to renew, in other words, they, they have to accept the renewal. So as long as we step up every three years and renew, it does stay in perpetuity. Uh, and, uh, the, the, if for some reason, uh, we have not been notified by Corso about the renewal, then it's deemed to be renewed. In other words, if they fail to notify us, and because they fail to notify us, we aren't prompted in notifying that we want to renew, that basically is not on us, uh, then the renewal is deemed to be automatic. So in any event, I feel that the agreements are fine and, uh, accomplish our objectives, uh, which is that, uh, we will ultimately have a permanent, temporary, we will have a temporary garage during construction and a permanent garage, uh, for all time for $10 a year, which I think is a pretty good deal.
It's $10 for three years, right?
$3.33 a year.
Right, and, and, and at renewal, it's another $10 for the three years, so. And mate, we have to put that in the budget, Todd.
I know, to put that budget, you never know. Uh, thank you, thank you for that, and thank you for all your hard work over the years, is this, and the committee as well, and, and, and involved. Uh, any other questions or discussion? I mean, um, are we, are we ready to approve these documents?
Oh, I just have a question.
Of course.
And I, it may have slipped by me looking through this document. Um, it does seem to be, and I'm looking at the, um, the construction management agreement and permit conditions. Uh, and it does seem to be quite detailed, especially with respect to traffic and parking. Um, I know the, the adjacent residents, um, on, uh, I think it's Rosemary and Thornapple really don't want any, uh, extra traffic spilling over there and that the construction site has been, um, or, you know, Corso has been very clear that all of the construction vehicles and the workers will be parking on the site, not on the side streets. Um, however, uh, things have a way of happening. I know it seems like they have, they're very clear here about the kind of communications that workers need to receive to be notified that they are not supposed to be on those streets. But what are we going to do if they are anyway? Right, like you can hire a bunch of people who last week didn't get those flyers or didn't get that notice. Um, and so I just, you know, want to be aware that people are going to be especially sensitive to this. And then, you know, what, what would our remedies be?
Well, the, the residents always have the option of petitioning to make it a permitted street, um, which makes enforcement that much easier. Uh, but that has to come from the residents, if you will. Uh, so I see that as a, as a possible discussion point. That is not something that has been requested, um, by the, any of the, you know, areas that directly, um, in the periphery of, of the project, uh, but that's something that's always available to them that makes it that much easier for, for enforcement. In terms of, um, what can be done, I imagine that, and this is just a guess here, the town staff is going to be on a daily basis. There's going to be something to, to discuss, to, to just get an update on and, and things like that, that the, it's another kind of way of, um, at least understanding if there, if there are vehicles there that are not supposed to be there. Um, but that's what I'm initially thinking of.
Yeah, and, and Todd has the phone numbers for the on-duty police officers. And if you, he gets a complaint from the town that somebody's parked there, he can dispatch a unit there to ticket him, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. So happy to, uh, entertain the individual motions. Well, let's do, let's make it a party because it's gone on for a while, so, why not?
I move that we accept the lease agreement, the construction management agreement and permit conditions and, is there another one? Declaration of covenants, thank you.
Is there a second? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous approval. Thank you again, Todd and Dave and Tolbert and everyone that has contributed to putting together these documents and ensuring that the town has its interests covered. So this has been a Herculean effort and we're really happy to move forward with this in many respects, so thank you. The next item up for discussion is a, a request that has come in from, well, re- requests has come in from another, uh, community, another municipality to support a project that, um, for an outdoor classroom at Rosemary Hills Elementary School. If you'd like to come forward and provide, uh, just introduce yourself and provide, thank you for coming here and, and during all these other discussions, I appreciate it.
No problem. I, um, my name is Katie Vale, I live in section three. Um, I currently sit on their, um, council. Um, and I'm also, uh, the PTA treasurer at Rosemary Hills and the, um, immediate past president. Um, and I'll also be involved at Tevey Chase Elementary next year because my son will go on there and my daughter will start at Rosemary Hills. So I'll continue to straddle both. Um, but first, thank you so much for even putting this on the agenda, I'm very grateful for your consideration. Um, I, this space has been in need of, uh, refresh for a while. It's been put in, it was put in a little over a decade ago and, um, hasn't been renovated. And during the pandemic, when no one was there, it really became a bit of a jungle. So we've worked very hard and spent a lot of PTA money to get it back so that they can use it and it's not just a snake den. Um, but it costs a lot of money just to kind of keep it up to par. And we would like to invest in making it less maintenance-heavy and more educational. So, you know, I think it was originally envisioned as just a garden with a place to sit. And, um, now that we've cleared the space and people are using it again, we see that they really could use more than what is there. Um, so I brought this proposal for $65,000 to, uh, the section three council. And they agreed to fund 13,500 and recommended that I go to the other municipalities that are zoned for Rosemary Hills and see if they might also, um, contribute. And in the intervening time, I've heard back from Martin's additions and, um, they have a prohibition on such, um, donations apparently in their code, so they are not able to help. Um, and I have not had a response yet from section five, but I'm still, still working on that. Um, and now I'm coming here. Um, but basic, basically the proposal has but four parts. Um, the first part would be to enhance the teaching space and to have a, um, outdoor classroom board and better seating for the children and a, a shade sale. It's very sunny faces west, so in the afternoon it's too hot really for the little ones to be out there. Um, the second part would be refurbishing the picnic area where teachers like to have their lunch and have a break and bring kids out for special rewards to have lunch out there. Um, and then a more science center with planters and, um, magnet, um, magnifying stations and places to make ant farms and worm farms and also just to replace a lot of the mulch beds with pavers that would reduce the amount of weeding that we have to do for the space. Um, so that's a little bit about the project. I can talk a little bit about our school and our population and, um, why the PTA is looking for outside support for this, if that's helpful.
How big is the space?
So, it's, it's probably hard, I can pass, I have copies of this for all of you if you'd like. I don't know the square footage, I should probably do that, but the, there is a picture of the space. On the second page. Page two, so that's sort of like an aerial view of it. page two. So that's sort of like an aerial view of it. So students are able to sit there and do story time, do science observations and things like that. And it's really a space that they get excited about. And I've also been told by our English language learner teachers that it is also a great place for them to start conversations with those students to talk about something and have a sort of a point of reference to say, oh, look at that flower growing and help them with their language development.
Have you been able to apply for grants as well for this?
So there is a grant that will be coming up in the fall. It's with the Chesapeake Bay Trust. And they'll give up to $10,000. But that I will apply for that later. Once we sort of have a sense of where we're going. And I think we will, if we raise everything, it's currently in approval process with the district. So all of this would be contingent on them okaying the project. So, you know, Section Three approved the funds contingent on the final approval. So the principal has to put that through the process to allow us to make these changes to the space. But I would like to apply for that grant if possible. But I know they're very competitive and and hard to get. And because so many of our children are from these, in our municipalities go there. And I think like Section Three, you're very fortunate to have good reserves. I think it's a nice way to have public dollars that are sitting there, not being spent back in the community put to work for something that is a communal good. And our students are very diverse. We are a majority-minority school. And actually have just received the designation of a focus school because of the number of students we have with free and reduced lunch. And so this space gives them a safe place to explore nature, to understand their world and maybe have their first and only exposure to those kinds of things because many of them live in apartments nearby and just don't have that opportunity to get out and drive out places because they don't have cars, their parents are working long hours. So I see it as both a way to provide something that other children don't have. And that's a huge issue for children who don't have the means to get places. There's sort of learning gap in terms of experiences.
When this budget was done, I assume it was like last year.
Yeah.
How do we know that the 65 is really true?
You know, we would probably have to revisit it. And part of that is going through this process. So it it could go up. And I think we might have to do it in phases where maybe we fix one thing and then another. We do have some money, I think, that the PTA could backfill with it. I am the fundraiser as well for them. And I think we and the treasurer. So I think that we could backfill if we needed to. And you know, we're open to that. We're just trying to preserve the money that we use on a day-to-day basis for some of these critical needs that are coming up. We have families who are afraid to go to the grocery store. So we've created a food pantry. We have children who, you know, come with myriad needs. And we try to say yes to everything, whether it's a winter coat or, you know, scholarship money for them to participate in after-school programs, things like that. We try to provide, increase what we can give to our teachers for their stipends. Since I started there, they used to do 250. Now we do 500 a year and 750 for new teachers. But again, it would be nice to increase that more as costs go up. And my goal is to never have a teacher spend out of pocket for their classroom. So we say $500, but if they come to me, I will spend PTA money or my own money to make sure that happens. So I worry a little bit about that. But that's why we're trying to seek some partnerships.
Okay. I might say when you are thinking about updating this, that you put in a maintenance budget as well.
Okay.
I would imagine just stuff.
That's a really good idea. Yeah.
Truly understandable what's needed. Sorry, I didn't mean to monopolize it.
I had a question. What the, so you have, I'm sorry, the 65,000, Section Three has put in 13,000?
13,500.
500, okay. And you've asked Martin's additions, they said no. You've asked Section Five and they have not yet responded. And you're going to put in a grant. What are your other potential sources of funding to get to the 65?
Well, that would be the next step and probably having to do it in phases and take a little bit of our regular operating budget and and do that or PTA.
PTA.
So maybe it would be something that we would take a chunk from our auction proceeds. I am willing to do additional funding. I'm I the top donor for the PTA and I do a match every year for $10,000 my family gives. And then we try to get 10,000 from the community. But I'd be willing to go higher on that. Fortunately, my dad passed away last year, so I have some funds I could tap for that. And so those are kind of where it is right now. A lot of it's just me trying to source things. And even the landscaper who did that proposal for me is giving me a bit of help on the funding. I don't think that that, I think we would be lucky for him to do that. And he's done a lot of reduced rates of the landscaping as well. So.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just to be clear, this is where the kids in the town of Chevy Chase go for
The lower, before they come here.
Right.
It's pre-K two. And it includes a Head Start program and one of, we are the Down County Autism Program Site. So it's an intensive one-to-one program that is one of two in the county. There's one up county and one down county. So we have very unique makeup of our of our kids. But yeah, we're a big school. We're almost 600 kids. But all very little.
But yeah, that's where our kids would would go before coming to Chevy Chase Elementary School. Rich?
Well, I'm, it, I'm always, it's been a long time since I had kids in elementary school. But I remember a point in time where we were really proud of the county's school system and the amount of money that the county was spending. And I'm appalled that they don't support in the budget of the county, things like this for their, for our kids. And it's unfortunate that you have to do all that work to provide for the resources that these kids need. So I appreciate your work. Thank you for doing it. I'm sorry you have to do it.
No. It's really, it is unfortunate and I'm very, but I'm very passionate about it, not just for my children, but for all of the children that go there.
Questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You do a lot. I mean, you're a fellow council member, you know, we're, we know what it's like to be on the council.
We're itty-bitty though compared to.
I really do, I'm in awe of what you're, you're really, it does come across to me that you are putting your heart and soul into this. So thank you on behalf of all of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much for considering it. I hope you have a good evening. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great. Happy to have an initial discussion. Of course, anything that we decide, should we decide that we want to provide some funding would be a public hearing and, you know, all of that stuff. But just happy to have a discussion and get your initial thoughts.
I just want to say something about Rosemary Hills. My children went to Rosemary Hills a thousand years ago. And it really seems like it was a thousand years ago. And they, it is a very special place. This is a school of, you know, around 700 children, all under the age of eight. And they did have a special needs program there as well when my children were there. You know, that was the place where my daughter was reading at five in kindergarten and they pulled her out with a couple of other kids who could do that. So they're, they're really, you know, at that time, in any case, were able to manage a very wide range of abilities in addition to a very wide range of children from, you know, diverse backgrounds. And the extracurricular kinds of activities, you know, that you would think a regular school ought to be funded for, unfortunately, weren't. And it always you know, I was always heartened by the school administration's ability to work with their PTA to get special things like this outdoor classroom setup. So my children were not there when the outdoor classroom was done, but there were, you know, every year there was an outdoor event or something that was always very special to get the children involved, like in something without the school walls that got all of the kids interacting. So I think it's a really worthy effort for us to support in whatever way the council feels is appropriate. You know, primary school-aged children who are going through the regular MCPS will all go through Rosemary Hills before they come to Chevy Chase Elementary. And that transition for those children ends up being seamless. So, you know, they, they may start out with one group of kids at Rosemary Hills. It's a smaller group of kids who come to Chevy Chase Elementary and they may end up, you know, coming, coming again in contact with their Rosemary Hills classmates when they get to Silver Creek Elementary. So it's a, that that kind of mixing within our cluster is, it's, it's very special. I think it's a really broadens children's exposure to, you know, wide range of living styles and income levels in the county.
Thank you. Anyone else comment?
Yeah, I have a thought of a proposal. Also, I'm impressed with the project and think it's exactly the kind of thing that that the town should be able to support. And we, with our, with our ample reserves in particular, but also the, we are obligated to make sure that any such activity on our part be, have a very close tie to actual residents here. And we've helped out the Wonders Preschool Program, so this is entirely consistent. I just wanted, thinking about the total budget, I just wanted to throw out a thought, which is just for consideration, that we would say 10,000 of our money plus another 10,000 matched 50/50. So that would be, in other words, if they, in the fundraising, they were able to get the match, then the total amount raised off of a total contribution of the town of 20,000 would actually be 30,000. The other thing is that in Section Five is equal, they also send their kids to the same program, right? I know that the town of Chevy Chase is the largest of the Chevy Chases. Section Five is somewhat smaller, but if they were to be approached in a similar way, and maybe we could even join in that, that they would put in a certain amount and then another amount that'd be matched. The goal would be to that, that with the sum that we would be committing plus the match, the sum that Section Three has put in and the sum that we'd ask from Section Five with a match, that would that would get to the budget. Yeah, we'd get it done. I, and I would still require, if you go through the math, it's still going to require 15, $70,000 from other sources to make up the matching amount. But that's all right. That's, you would have the incentive to help raise that money. And even if it were from a grant, that grant part, that grant would would recognize that whatever they contributed would become double in value by whatever they offered. So it's just a thought for consideration. But the idea I think would be, I think in fundraising, it's always helpful if you have a plan for getting the entire amount raised. Makes people feel good that they're going to contribute to a known project that's defined rather than saying, well, if we can't get it all, we'll just do Phase One, which I understand is a very logical thing to say. But in terms of getting the, getting the job done, I think you want to say, here is how we're going to get there. And we're asking you, if you do this piece and they do their, their piece, then we get it done. So I think perhaps more discussions could be had, but I think that spirit of saying the municipalities should contribute X and then an additional amount Y, which they will if it's matched, provides that incentive to get to the full 65,000. And my feeling for the town is that, and just throwing this out as a discussion point, that our X would be 10,000 and our Y would be another 10,000. So that if that were matched, we would be, we'd be responsible in a sense for pulling in a total of $30,000 of the money. Just a thought.
Naming rights also seems to be something that given our, given our interactions around the Bethesda Market Park, right? And, you know, you want to put a bench in there, the bench is
That's actually a very good point.
A $1,000, you know, whatever, it's not going to be a $1,000 bench, but the idea being that, you know, if you want it named. These days, you're right. Depending on where the materials are coming from, it could very well be. But that, that might also galvanize some, some individual residents to, to provide some, you know, a good way to match it too.
Good way to match it because they would get, they were right.
And we could, we can make it very yeah, we could put out a town crier, we could say we're doing this or, or also would it matter how Section Five actually comes up with the match?
That's why I think there ought to be a discussion. The goal would be to come up with a financing plan that gets the job done. And you could talk to Greg about that. Yeah, sure.
Maybe you already talked about all that stuff, so.
Our, we have talked about that. I just, I wasn't sure what the appetite would be for that discussion. So this is the avenue I've started with. But I just want to say I'm extremely grateful because in no way, and you can tell by looking at this, am I some grant guru or specialist at any of this. So I really appreciate the advice. It's all very welcome. And I've also met a mother in my neighborhood in Section Three who knows a lot about outdoor education and her daughter is starting next year. And now I have this in her hands and she's going to help me with the grant proposal and sort of tie science standards to the work that we're doing so that when I put the grant proposal in, that I will have some more specifics. So I am trying to find the path forward. I don't, I didn't mean to imply that I would do a halfway job, but I'm realistic with whatever money we can get. So you know, and like, so that's, that's it. And I know our community in terms of Rosemary Hills, it's hard to raise a lot of of money out of that group because there is a smaller subset that actually has funds, you know, and in this environment, we have many families that are dual federal workers and have been fired. So I'm very sensitive to their economic instability and people who would otherwise be willing to give, I think understandably are scared to do so. So thank you. Sorry.
Good point.
While you're there, I, I guess one of the kind of had a mini discussion here that if we, if we put up money and we, let's say in the town, we said to our residents that have kids, if you contribute, we'll match your, we'll match your contribution. Do you have access to the, to the addresses and of the
I have a pretty good sense, yes, of who in each area are part, because I pretty active at the school. So I know most of the families that are there.
You know, I, I completely understand. I mean, it's a large catchment area.
It is.
And you have very, very many low-income residents that that rely on the school. We don't have low-income residents in Chevy Chase, to be quite honest. So we ought to target those people who can afford to make contributions and, and, and leverage our money.
And I think when Section Three Council, when they learned what I learned from Martin's addition, I think they were willing to come back and have ideas like this, where maybe the second part of their donation could be a match. where maybe the second part of their donation could be a match or something similar. And that we're just hoping the municipalities that can will step up and help us. And where there's a gap, I do think they will try to help me, but I don't want to, you know, over.
For us, as Barney said, you know, we have to make sure that whatever we give is, is benefit to the town. I mean, that's,
I think it goes hand in hand that you have, this is your local zone school.
What we could do is, I mean, that, it, focusing on the town and, and our residents and our, the kids that go there, we can, you know, we can leverage that. So, and I, and the other Chevy Chases can too.
Yeah, no, I, I know. That's sort of why I started with this strategy. And I thought, well, see where I can get with that and try to see what happens. I know it's a time of uncertainty for people, so I'm sensitive to that, even for municipalities and things, you know.
Todd, is this project eligible for project open space through the state?
No, I don't believe it is. Can check on it, but I'm almost certain the answer is no.
Okay, all right. We receive an open space grant, so that's why I was wondering if, if it's available for schools as well.
Like I said, I really appreciate it. I'm just one parent. Two of us that work really hard.
No, no, I appreciate that. Great.
It also, it also counts as ARPA, uh, under ARPA's guidelines, wouldn't it, Todd?
Could potentially, yes, it could.
Not relevant to us now because of the way we've handled the, the ARPA funding, but just in terms of it.
Right, exactly.
Where can say it comes from?
So what sort of, I think we're, I haven't heard from Stephanie specifically, but I, I think we're feeling good that we want to put something together for next month. Yeah, so I,
I think talking to section five would be a good thing to do.
Yeah, I can do that.
Try to get.
Okay, ten and ten.
I really, I, I want to pressure our residents to get behind this. So we need to identify a family or a couple of families in the town from your list of people who can spearhead the town's efforts for these things.
Help come up with a matching grant.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, but do, are, are we going forward, say, with, with Barney's suggestion for the amounts? There's, but we still need to have that, I need to, we need to put something in for next month so that we, we have a public hearing on it.
We're gonna do this as a supplemental.
As a? Yeah, but, yes, that's correct. It's not part of the, yes.
The supplemental, but it will be, even if we approved it, the expense won't arise until next fiscal year because the planning has to be finished. We have to get the financial plan done. I mean, it's, this won't, this, I would take my fair that the construction work itself, if the money came together, would not happen until fall at the earliest, spring of twenty twenty-six more likely. Spring of twenty twenty-six. Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, good there. Let's move forward. Thank you for that. The next is another, uh, next item for discussion is another contribution request from the Chevy Chase Fire Department. And we have one of our residents who is on a board, wearing the hat, yeah, coming in. Good, good, good. Well, please start and introduce yourself.
Thank you very much. I'm Julie Trochio. I live at forty-one twenty-three Leland Street. And it has been my pleasure to and privilege to represent the town to the Chevy Chase Fire Department Board. It's been a really interesting experience and not only interesting, but they gave me this very cool hat. This is the fire station on Connecticut Avenue next to the, next to the library. I serve along with Barbara Bernaski, who's on the Zoom, and also John Byrd, who is here with us today, and he is the president of the board. The fire station represents, or consists of ten different jurisdictions. Among those are Martin's Edition, North Chevy Chase, the Hamlet, Rollingwood, and some of the others. So we are one of, one of the ten. One of my first meetings, I realized that almost all of, that some of the other sections make an annual contribution to the fire department, but our town does not. So I called our mayor and I said, do you know why we are, do not contribute? And she said, the issue just hadn't come up to her knowledge. So we, I thought it was probably an oversight and I'm really happy to have this opportunity to talk to you tonight. Here's what I've learned. The fire station gets most of its funding from the government and from some grants, but it still needs contributions. Contributions are primarily used for capital costs. Most recently, they'd had a replacement for the fireplace gas insert and they, and they bought some new beds. But mostly it's for unexpected expenses. Examples would be for like a roof replacement or some major plumbing issues. So John and I are here to ask for you to, the council, to approve a contribution and to put it in the budget for an annual contribution. Now, we don't have a specific amount in mind. However, I can tell you the other sections contribute from one thousand to five thousand every year. Oh, and I also wanted to mention they have a wonderful open house every year with great activities for the kids, like make your own fire, uh, fire truck and lots of giveaways, like this cool hat. And they have great educational information for adults as well. So John, John Byrd is here. I can answer some specific questions you might have about the fire department.
So with your meetings, what, what has come up, say, for this year in terms of unexpected expense or need?
Thank you for having us. I'm John Byrd. I live at forty-three fifteen Curtis Road. This year, the, the big, our, our big expense was really the fireplace insert that went bad. And, and that's something that the, the county would, wouldn't cover or was unable to cover, wasn't in their budget. Most of our funds do come from grants or from the county. We don't, we don't have a, a large budget. We spend about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. But we have some items that every year need to be replaced and, and the county may not have it in their budget, so, so we try to cover that. The, the, the firehouse is owned by the Chevy Chase Fire Board, which means it's basically owned by the citizens. So what we're trying to do is get a capital reserve fund, so that if anything comes up, say the fire department doors, which we have, we replaced twenty years ago at a cost of like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So if something like that came up and it, it was, you know, unfunded, we would have to have some reserves somewhere. So that's basically what we're trying to do, is just make sure that we can cover anything that comes up with the, with the firehouse, because that's our basic thing that we're responsible for.
John, can you tell, I, this, this county amazes me in its fire protection arrangements. It's unlike anything I've ever, ever seen. So can you tell, we've got, we've got three firehouses within about a two-mile radius of, or mile radius of us. The county's seven and, and that.
Well, our, our station seven and station six is the Bethesda station over here at Wisconsin and Bradley.
Yeah, okay. So what, how does that all work together and who provides? Is it the county that provides the baseline funding for all of those? Or how does?
The county provides the baseline funding for all the fire departments. However, Bethesda Chevy Chase Rescue Squad's a little different. They, they do almost all of theirs through fundraising. They take very little money from the county. In fact, they didn't take any money from the county until I think about two years ago.
Almost all volunteer.
Yeah, yeah. So when a call comes in to wherever it goes, where does it go? It goes to a, to a central fire dispatching unit?
Yes.
Who do they dispatch? I mean,
They dispatch the nearest unit.
It could be any of those three, whatever.
Could be any of those, well, Bethesda Chevy Chase Rescue Squad is, is, they don't have fire engines. But if it's, if it's a rescue situation, they, they would dispatch whatever the closest unit was. Now, BCC Rescue Squad, we actually have a, a commitment from them to man a ambulance at station seven. Now, it's been about two years, maybe three years now, which has worked out very well. We're, we're happy to partner with them. So, so anyhow, the county basically funds, I, I can give you a little history. There, there is, there, there's a fire tax that everybody pays. Fire tax is part of your, your property tax. And when Chevy Chase and Bethesda started, they, the properties that they covered, actually, they, we actually got those funds to ourselves. And everything was kind of separate at that point, like Kensington did their thing, Chevy Chase did their thing, Bethesda did their thing. And as things got bigger and bigger, the county decided that they were better off if they, you know, kind of coordinated all this to make sure everybody was getting the proper service. And when they did that, they basically took the fire tax. So the, the fire tax no longer resides with the, the local fire department. But the local fire departments are still there. And there's, there's nineteen of them, local fire departments in the county. And there's, I think it's thirty-three fire stations and a couple of rescue squads. And so anyhow, so we, we kind of lost control of what we could do with the fire department, with the fire station itself to some degree. We've always been a paid station. We started back in nineteen twenty-seven. We were a paid station even then, but it was paid through the fire tax. But every other station, including Bethesda, which was a paid station up until about, I don't know, five, six years ago, when they got some volunteers and they run an ambulance out of there with the volunteers. So anyhow, at, at that point, the, the, the funding, what, what, what they decide basically is, is what they fund. And they, and they pay the, they pay the firemen. We used to pay the firemen. We don't do that anymore. So we, we have an unlimited budget. It's very fairly small.
So the county pays the salaries of the firemen?
Yes, yes. But, and again, not BCC Rescue Squad, they're volunteers.
That's all volunteer, yeah.
So anyhow, what, what we feel responsible for is, is the station itself. It's, it's, belongs to the board. And of course, we, we like to help out the fire, firefighters that are stationed there to the degree that we can. So, so we do some things for them, you know. But at least from my standpoint, and I think from the board's standpoint, uh, the fire board's standpoint, what we're concerned about is being able to meet something that comes up. You know, we, we need to replace that roof on that station. It would cost us a fortune. And unfortunately, we don't have a fortune right now. So we're just looking for you know, funds that we can kind of know are coming in. We do a fundraiser every year. We make a few thousand dollars. I mean, I think we were at about twenty-two thousand. We spend about twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. And we're, we'd like to build up a capital reserve fund.
Thank you. Thanks very much for the presentation, by the way. And I've been to the firehouses. It's actually, and gotten a tour, so it's kind of cool. And, and without going into the politics of it, we know that we have a far, far better relationship with this fire department than we do with those guys. The, and appreciate very much that we have two council, two members of the town who are serving on the, on the board. I guess my question would be, and I, I'm glad that, Rich, you raised what you raised, because clearly then, when one thinks about the firehouse and the budget to run it, the vast bulk of the funds then effectively do come from the county to pay for the professional firefighters. And I presume the county is responsible for the equipment, the fire engines themselves and all that as well?
Yes. Now, if we had volunteers, we, we would probably get some equipment, but since we don't have volunteers now, we don't.
All right. So, so the, the personnel, the, the professional firefighters and the, and the equipment they use is basically provided by the county.
That is correct.
So, so the, the purpose of the board and your twenty-five thousand a year is to basically provide the house. I mean, you know, the, the structure of the building, some amenities that afford them as well. The firehouse itself as a physical plant, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess, just as, I'm, I'm sympathetic personally to our providing something, but just speaking for me. But, but I, I don't feel I have enough grounding yet to understand the budget. And I'd also like to know what are the amounts, the actual amounts given by which other community, so we have a sense of that context and comparison.
Oh, we can get to that.
I'm sure you can. And, and something more about the goal of what you're trying to reach. So if you just provide us some better understanding of the finances, that would be very helpful and give me comfort before I'd want to make a decision about, are doing this. I think, as you correctly said, this is not a one-off, as was the case that we were talking about in Rosemary Hill. This is something which we'd be putting into our budget on a recurring basis, which we have done for other causes. We do it for Chevy Chase at home. That's a recurring amount that we give and we're very comfortable doing it. But we went through a very similar exercise. We really wanted to understand their budget, understand what their needs were. We knew what was the amount of contribution we were making against their budget. So I just feel like it'd be good for us to have more precise information about all that before we actually make up our minds.
Yeah, we can get that to him in writing.
Yeah, that would be great, because you mentioned the roof, for example. God forbid something happens with the roof. So I would also ask for some, you know, sort of, we expect end of life for X, Y, and Z to occur as part, as part of this kind of budgetary process, if you will, so that we can get a sense of not only what sort of reserve, to Barney's point, that you're trying to get to, but then what, what do you expect to happen over the next year, two years, five years or whatever to, to get to. So that way, it's a lot easier when it comes time to have a public hearing that we can answer the questions that will inevitably come from residents, like what exactly are, 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 are tax dollars going towards? So, um, yeah.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, so, and you're welcome to come back again and let us know.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for listening to us.
No, thank you. Appreciate it. Do you want a brief break? Okay, yeah, so we've been at it for two and a half hours, so let's take a five-minute break. Thank you.
Of course, yes. What else? So it's the bracketing, as we're preparing towards the decade, and the crosswalk is like in a different position. He was, uh, supporting the Chevy Chase. Support difference, S H I S, they have. Stanford Street? No, there's a hill. So, yes, there's carmen on the south side. So there's, um, Joe.
So that's right, that's exactly.
Rock and dark, they're on the same. The other business is.
Right.
Oh, very close, very close. I have the option of the film. The technical elements are great. But those markets are, so we're going to update on that in the last episode.
Yes.
You know, it's going to be recorded on the yellow side.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Okay, yeah, no worries.
Yesterday, in the federal court on that county.
Right.
Terrible.
I remember.
I think the bar is still in that, I can tell you already.
Yeah.
I presented.
Well, let's keep our fingers crossed.
And then they, oh. Anyway.
No, but that's great, yeah.
Yeah, I mean. I'm following that.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Appreciate it.
Okay, are we ready to sail on through the rest of this agenda? All right. Well, we're going to have really two fun things to talk about now. The first is the Bradley Lane pedestrian slash vehicular traffic management. So this is in response, I'll have Barney take over here, in response to various concerns and questions been brought forth by residents of Bradley Lane, and we're, what we've been doing since then. So turn over to Joe or you or.
I think, I think we covered some of this in our last council meeting, didn't we not? Didn't we report on some of the discussions we'd had?
But not, not the meeting that took place.
Ah, okay.
That happened after.
Ah, okay. The, basically, we were looking to see whether there was, it's really followed up on your idea, Steph, that we could look for further improvements in signalization at the corner of Wisconsin and Bradley. And the short answer is not easy. The, shocking, right. The, first of all, there is limited authority of the Montgomery County Department of Transportation vis-à-vis the S H A. The, as I understand this, and daughter Irene, correct me if I'm mistaken, but there is a limit to the, that basically the, the county can control the timing of the lights, but they can't dramatically change the, the traffic pattern of the light without getting S H A approval. And the county's view is that because of post-COVID traffic coming back, they have basically reached an optimal point looking at all directions. And if they were to lengthen the green light, whether the full green or the green arrow, just for the people going westbound on Bradley, they would inevitably be building up extra traffic. Exactly. So that, they're very wary of doing that. They feel they've just kind of optimized at this point. Doing anything more drastic of signalization such as, I guess, Irene, the point that you were making, which is to have the dedicated green last longer and basically, well, again, it would be a matter of timing. You would be taking away from the time that traffic coming the other way from Bradley. So net was, there was no easy answer. The other thing, though, that came out of it, which I found instructive, which also poses problems. And in the past, notwithstanding the concerns that residents have expressed about any physical activity to widen that street, because they wouldn't want to see it become easier to, to go on, I had had the thought that widening, widening Bradley at Wisconsin, not necessarily so much at the intersection, but lengthening the third lane for traffic that wants to turn left and go south. That that at least would allow that lane to fill up more easily if it were longer. But frankly, what also came out of all this was the, the backup on Bradley is often so long that you would find that it would still be hard for cars to get into that lane. And now, instead of having, as you might sometimes observe if you're driving there, two or three empty spaces that can't be filled because the cars want to go straight, don't, you would now have five, six, or seven empty spaces, because the car backup is so great, the cars wanting to go south wouldn't be able to get into that lane. So I, I think.
We can't win.
Thank you. You, you, you provide a succinct and elegant statement of the problem. Short of putting in a, and this is Irene's other idea, short of really putting in a lane, really a third lane entirely, and potentially having two lanes turning left, so you could actually empty out much faster, which would allow you to, to just handle more traffic exiting that intersection without taking away seconds from the other directions, right? Or essentially do what is done if you're on, at the corner of Connecticut and East, and East West, and you are heading, if you're on East West, heading east, you're, there's a double lane left turn, but that's a massive project and I just don't see that happening. So I think at the end of the day, we have not had much success.
One of the concerns I thought would be fairly easy was just the line of sight. As you're turning right there, the, some of the pedestrians were, and it was to move the Chevy Chase Country Club sign back.
That's at the other intersection.
It's the other, right.
And there, and there we, I mean, that, I was talking about Wisconsin and Bradley. What you're talking about, we do have, Dave and, and Joe and I had a very cordial meeting with the manager and the vice manager of the Country Club. And, and we, they are considering the proposal, which we came with up right on the spot, which was, as Joe observed, the sightlines for, for the drivers that would be coming westbound on, on Bradley. Eastbound, thank you, eastbound. It does not require eliminating the wall entirely from the corner. It means dropping it down to thirty inches. That actually opens up a potential solution, which is much easier on the Country Club. And what they quickly realized was that if they dropped the wall from its current height down to thirty inches, and I'll say, you know, ten feet on either end of the side of the corner, they would not have to change the landscaping behind the wall very much, because the wall actually goes about eighteen inches higher than the landscaping behind it anyway. So if you drop it down to thirty-three feet, and it could maybe it'd be, you know, that'd be thirty-six inches, but you know, something like that. You would be able to keep the bushes. You would just slope it a bit more. You'd have to trim back a couple of bushes, branches on one of the bushes, but you would not take out the tree that is on the Bradley side of the corner. And drivers coming there would see the, they would see the pedestrians from waist up, but that's presumably all they have to see. And that would probably give you a good eighty percent solution at a very minimal cost and, and impact on the part of the Country Club. So that's the proposition that we put on the table right on the spot. But to my knowledge, and I don't know, Todd, if you've heard anything, we have not heard anything back from the Country Club yet. Is that right, Todd?
That is correct.
So we do have to follow up with that when Dave comes back, I guess, or if you want to follow up with him. But we, I think we've given them enough time to give us an answer. But they said they would take it to their board. But that just means they have to lower the wall. They don't have to eliminate it. And, and we, we made it clear that, you know, this was a significant issue for our residents. And we would, if we had to, go to S H A, which I should think they would not want us to have to do. So I hope that we'll get there. On some of the other matters, the, and Todd, you can give, if there's any further update, but to my knowledge, we still do not have an answer as to whether they can use the speed camera on the south side of Bradley for both directions. They're still, they have to get back by the end of this month, right?
Yeah, they were supposed to get us, or at least do the evaluation by last Monday, this past Monday. So I'm, I have a tickler out to reach out to the A T E U manager tomorrow to find out whether the technology exists. But in the meantime, John and I have met with, given the new state law that it would allow us to deploy speed cameras, John and I met with the firm that provides services to Montgomery County, Chevy Chase Village, and I believe Gaithersburg and Rockville as well. The technology does exist, and the county is procuring cameras that can monitor and enforce speeds in both directions, specifically on a highway like Bradley. So the technology is there. So it's just whether or not the county is willing to deploy it on Bradley. I don't believe that specific system is, is, is able to be moved from location to location. I believe it's a static system they have for that purpose. But the technology is there, and whether the county chooses to deploy it there is another matter. And whether we choose ultimately, when we have the discussion, when the council discusses whether or not we wish to take advantage of the new authority that we've gained to deploy speed cameras, whether or not we want to deploy it as well. But I will follow up to see whether they have the technology, but that technology is static. As far as I understand, John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's a static technology that can monitor speeds in both directions. Whether the county chooses to deploy it on that roadway is one matter, and whether, of course, we choose to deploy it on the north side is another matter.
What do you mean by static technology?
There aren't housing units that you can move cameras between. It's on a pole and it rotates. They have three cameras attached to a pole and they rotate three hundred and sixty degrees, almost three hundred and sixty degrees, to capture traffic receding and advancing. And so those are, those are pole-based systems. They may be pedestal-based systems too, but they're not cameras that are put in housing units. John, is that what you're understanding?
Yeah, it's a pole-mounted system with cameras. They have two different technologies. One's LiDAR, which is a laser beam that shoots and collects point data. They have to capture the license plate. But the ones they use in intersections are pretty sophisticated with three cameras. They can do red light detection and all kinds of things. But that's when you get into this bidirectional capability. That capability is kind of overkill for what we're trying to accomplish. The lower-end system with the LiDAR, one direction of a receding car, capture the license plate, get the photos, the tags, the speed, all that is, is what the village contract has. And, and that's what we've done some exploration on.
And that, and that's what, and that takes us to the next part of this, which is with the passage of the bill in Annapolis to permit us to have our own speed cameras, then arguably, we would not need to try to have it done both way, you know, both have, have, have a bidirectional camera on the south side. Instead, we have our separate dedicated camera on the north side, feeding information to the town, and we'd be completely in control of that speed camera.
Yeah, but you can't, you, you, we can't afford speed on Bradley Boulevard.
Yes, we can.
We can.
How can we? It's a state road.
Yes, we can, just as the village does in Connecticut. We can enforce speeds on any roadway within our corporate boundaries and our, the, the, the corporate boundaries of the town extend to the midline of East, West, Connecticut and Bradley.
Quite carefully about the north side of the street.
For the houses.
For the houses.
I didn't think we could enforce it. It's to the midline.
So I, the question I had for Todd about, because the second issue is if we wanted to look hard at that solution, where could it go? And there's a strong preference, understandably. We'd like to see it on public property, if possible, not asking the favor of a resident. But then you get into sort of how large a system it is physically, and could you find a place to locate it that would not block sightlines of, on any of the streets? So there's, that's the, that's the next more granular look that staff needs to review. And the question I asked Todd in that regard was, is there, in the technology that's now existing for speed cameras, do you still need those huge, big, boxy things that seem to take up a lot of space? Or is there something much smaller, much more elegant?
But that's what they were saying, right? It's can be pole-mounted.
Pole-mounted, right. So if that could be done, I, I thought that was referring to bidirectional, even a simpler one.
Even the, even the, even the LiDAR system, the simple one could be pole-mounted and.
So that would, that would then allow us much more easily to put it on public space, right?
Assumedly, they do site analyses and things like that as all-inclusive cost for their contract. So they would do site analyses and determine if there are appropriate sightlines. But we believe there are. If it's pole-based, we believe that putting it on the, the northwest corner of Maple at Bradley would provide sufficient sightlines and we could do one there.
Okay, good. And then I guess the other question is cost and also the cost of monitoring and looking at it, how site, all that needs to be thought through and presented to us as well. So.
We have all that information. I'll be sending an email to the council shortly.
So we'll be releasing the Kraken. Keep in mind, if everyone's going to want to have this on their, so with, we, I, I personally believe so that the, the, finances of this work out, the technology of this works out. I think we need to, future councils to think about a policy, or just like we have a policy designation for speed humps and, and, and other tools that we do the same thing around here, because otherwise, everyone's going to be requesting this stuff.
I don't, I don't have any idea what the, the cameras on Connecticut Avenue that the, what is it, Chevy Chase Village owns? I, I remember reading something a year or two ago. One of the complaints was, is that the, those cameras were there solely for the purpose of engorging the coffers of the, of the Chevy Chase Village. I'd be curious to see what their revenue stream is.
Is there something wrong with this?
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, we may have, we may have a budget windfall here.
Has that information. So I, I'm not gonna, so Todd has that information, because it, it has come up in discussion about things. And it's actually, you know, maybe there was more money made from that, but it's been a true deterrent. People have gotten the message. So revenue has significantly dropped off over time.
Yeah, which you would expect.
Because people are well aware. People are well aware that you're, you're going to get nabbed, you know? And there's lots of signage, even in our parts of, of the town, that it's upcoming. You're going to get caught. You better stop. But what I'm saying is more, we, we need to think about a policy around this. One thing to have the power, think to have the responsibility. So. Yes. There you go. So, good.
That's what a big mayor for two years does for you. You learn wisdom like that.
There you go. So anything else around Bradley?
The only thing we're looking at as well is the cost of moving the fire hydrants, which came up as a request. But especially given the memorial scar that one of our council members has from having run into a fire hydrant. There it is, okay.
That'll take.
Back on that yet.
That'll take quite a while since we're dealing with W S S C.
All right. And also, and besides moving, there's also the question, moving where? And the issue of getting permission from local residents, which is an issue. I think those are the major items that we discussed. Oh, and the other thing is, a barricade is not in the cars. It's simply not going to be there. Let's put it this way. It potentially could be, but it would have to be at the standard that S H A requires, which essentially would eat up a large fraction of the sidewalk. So doing something simple and light and narrow is not going to be.
We were thinking about those, like, just bollards, right? And, and S H A came back and said, no, because it gives a false sense of security that you're actually protected. Anyway. Great. How about Stanford Street?
Chair of the Public Services Committee is here.
So we meet again. Good evening. Howard Burkhoff, Chair of P S C, returning for another month of fun. A couple of comments. First, Rich, the cameras on Connecticut Avenue have to pay for the seventeen-person police department in the village of Chevy Chase. So just think about the finances on that. Secondly, Um, secondly, uh, my daughter had a great experience and is alum of uh Rosemary Hills Elementary School, and so I just wanna reinforce. Everything that was talked about earlier and um fully supportive of that. And finally, um, if you're interested next month, I can bring my Lego model of the Chevy Chase Fire Department. If you want to see it up close and personal, happy to do that. Yes, yes, and in fact, since since that, I have built Station Six over here for Bethesda, so, and I brought it over for their open house. It's my therapy, I work for the federal government. Today. Anyways, you're not here to listen to me ramble on, I'm here to talk to you tonight about the Stanford Hill. Um, options and recommendations that our Public Service Committee has taken on over the course of 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 this year, actually. Um, I'd like to thank Carlo Carlo Coella for uh being here tonight, so he's gonna. Hold me in check to make sure I'm telling you uh the truth on how things went with the Public Service Committee. Uh, first is background, the um, this issue has arose because of many resident complaints over the years. Um, following Leland and East, which we solved uh this past year, I would think, I I would venture to say. Uh, anecdotally, the the hill on Stanford is probably the second biggest complaint with regards to um line of sight. And that uh opposing cars can't see each other. And there, when there's a car parked at the crest there, when there's cars parked at the crest there, there's only room for one car to go at a time. So it presents a pretty significant safety concern, um. Uh, you know, I I don't live there, but the reports are, we get a lot of Mexican standoffs at that point where cars just. And then, and then it becomes difficult who, who yields to who. And it gets exasperated during the uh during the rush hour, um, that that particular stretch of the road. Um, sees a lot of traffic in the afternoon, especially in the after, morning and afternoon rush hour. Um, especially when the entry restrictions are in effect and uh on Maple, right? And folks will turn on East and then come down Stanford to get to wherever they go, so we we, there was a. Um, a traffic collection study undertaken so we could understand um. The volume of traffic and and the speeds uh throughout the course of the day. Um, early on in the year, uh, we asked uh uh the distinguished Joe Cuthro to to come up with some potential. Uh, courses of action um on how we could address it and and the initial. Course of actions that were proposed uh presented to the P S C included um. Um, doing uh, well, so I call them cutouts, so expanding the roadway near the crest and there was different variants of. Um, you know, we'll say two car cutout, up to four car cutout, that would impact various numbers of trees. That um are in the right of way, so up to, up to three different trees would be impacted. Um, another option was uh that that was proposed was doing some kind of electric, electronic signalization. That would provide like a warning signal to cars coming in either direction, right? Over the hill detection, thanks, Joe. Um, another option was uh looking at one-way traffic, right, and eliminating. Um, the potential for 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 that head-on, um, that was. For various reasons, that 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 was uh not, not looked at very closely, because that would have a dramatic impact. Across the town with a a greater town study. Um, so we scheduled a uh public hearing sec- session for the Public Service Committee in December. And invited residents to come, and there was uh a another option that was also proposed. Uh, in addition to to what I described as, we'll say, physical changes on Stanford Hill. But potentially to mitigate, as we looked at the volume of traffic that would come during rush hour, another option that we put on the table. Was um changing the entry restrictions on Maple, so in instead of having people. Come down east and cutting down and through Stanford was potentially looking at lifting the restrictions on Maple and. Allowing folks to turn, turn on the Maple well. When we held our dis- when we held our, when we sent out the letters, um, talking about the different options and we, at our public. Uh, meeting in December, there was a lot of uh reaction to the entry restrictions, um. A lot, and 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 that that, the the, we we sent letters to those directly affected, but that seemed to. Expand and we had, we had residents from all up and down Stanford and Rosemary and Maple and. Thorn Apple, all all over the town coming and commenting on. On the entry restrictions, so that was, that was pretty clear, but after, um, so we had a robust discussion in December and asked for resident feedback. Um, on their ideas and their thoughts on how to approach the, the visibility issues on Stanford. The many residents in that area raised a secondary concern um about speed on Stanford and. Uh, and and of course, that's a concern all all throughout the town, as you heard on Maple. Um, but they were worried about speed as well and um asked, you know, to to help mitigate. You know, uh, the speed issues, traffic calming measures such as such such as speed humps. Coming out of the December meeting, the actions that we took um were, the consensus at that time. Were to look at the cutout, right, and, you know, residents even offered, you know, the entire length of the street. But 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 we looked at various, we were asked to ask Joe to go back and look at. Various lengths of cutouts, what what the are the possible was, and and speed bumps as well as to look at the. Potential stop sign at the Oak Ridge intersection, um, which kinda, kinda bees in um down, down there as well. Um, so we did that, looked at that, um, Joe did a great job putting together different sketches and in options. We 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 then reconvened in person last month in February, again, sent out letters to the residents, invited them to come. And participate, um, as we talked through, as as I thought we were gonna talk about. The cutout um and various lengths of it, it turned out. Different residents showed up this time and had different opinions and perspectives, so. Um, again, speed was a common theme, um, a lot of the the immediate residents in the area were questioning any need. You know, for cutouts and and again, they just, they wanted to focus on the speed and. Um, uh, asking for speed humps and uh they also asked, uh, actually, instead of removing. Entry restrictions, they asked to increase the time period for entry restrictions on uh. On Maple and East and wherever they are at the various hours, it talks about in the morning rush that um people wait till. The entry restriction is lifted and then they start, and then the traffic comes, so, a lot of passion, um. After about four and a half hours of feedback, we. I, I, you know, we had to get to a consensus and I, yes, I'm I'm being a little um dramatic there, but it was, it was uh some passionate discussion. At the end of the day, we were able to get the residents to acknowledge that there is a visibility issue, right? And 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 hey, the speed bumps, the the traffic calming measures, first of all, I I reminded them, they they control that, but we're here to talk about the visibility issues. And there's a real problem there, and um several of the residents acknowledged that, right? And so um, um, to break the deadlock, the residents um agreed to. Um, actually remove parking spots, which was a big surprise to us, and um. Instead of, instead of, instead of doing the cutouts, they agreed to remove. Uh, a handful of parking spots, um, up to four parking spots, right at, right at the crest of the hill to uh. To to uh enable that visibility of cars coming at each other. And that is a uh non-permanent solution that uh was uh uh palatable to the committee. To do a, we'll say, a trial run, so at the end of the day. Um, I polled each of the P S C members and we essentially got to a consensus on the following recommendations in that, in that area. Um, and that is to uh support parking restrictions at the crest of the hill, whether it's three or four car lengths. Um, that's, I know, I know, um, Bernie and Joe looked at that. As a viable option, and this is a, this would be a non-permanent change, right, so i- i- in other words, it's not. It it's reversible, if, and it it also keeps the trade space in the future, if. We do not feel this solves the problem, we can always go back and and look at the cutouts in the future and and trees and all that stuff. So, so that's, that's, that's really the primary recommendation to um. Um, address the visibility, uh, the safety concern. Um, there was some discussion about whether the parking restriction, restriction should be time sensitive, we talked about like seven AM to seven PM. Um, I think at the end of the day, you know, probably best to just not, not do that, but that's open for discussion. Um, at the end of the day, additionally, the the committee consensus recommends um implementing the the speed humps to. Uh, along uh with with the reduction of uh parking spots as a, as a speed mitigation. Um, in a minimum, uh, two speed humps, one on either side of the crest, recognizing that, uh, I think on the. East, west side, west side, um, there would have to be a waiver for uh the distance requirement. In order to put a speed hump in, it doesn't meet the exact town requirement, so there'd have to be a waiver there, but we do recommend putting a speed hump on either side. Um, some of the residents endorsed uh a third speed hump down uh south towards Oak Ridge, I. Less concerned about that, really, from my, from my personal perspective, I'm really. Uh, more focused on on the two, on either side of the crest. Um, and then um, and then the P S C did, did support looking at the. Um, the 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 traffic entry restrictions uh for the morning rush um to 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 increase the time. That was, that was the consensus from the P S C, although, again, I will just tell you from my personal opinion, I. I I I don't think that's gonna move the the needle personally. Um, but the committee did, did suggest looking at that, so. Those were the, those were the key takeaways and the um, the summary of of our journey over the course of the year on on Stanford. We do strongly believe that action does need to be taken, I I feel very strongly that the visibility issues need to be addressed. I know the local residents were really focused on speed, but the the visibility is a real issue. And I'll pause here for questions, comments, or concerns.
Thank you, Howard, does anyone have any?
I could follow up, Ms. Lee, then first of all, I want to uh thank Howard and the committee for having taken this on. And Howard has done a superb job of handling the uh, the drama of the events. Uh, just being very, very good at exactly what someone in a committee should be, which is listening hard and making sure that everyone can be heard and. Staying cool and collected and done a really good job, Howard, so I wanna make sure that my colleagues uh appreciate, understand that. And Joe, thank you very much for your participation, steady support on this. Um, and the um. Howard correctly captured that there was quite an adjustment of resident views between the two meetings. But uh the fact that they've come out and endorsed the idea of taking away parking spaces, which. Uh, as we know, is a very rare commodity in our town to be given away. And especially one might observe on this street where they've already banned parking on the north side. So taking away three positions on the south side is actually quite significant. Um, the, the um, I did meet subsequently with with Dave and 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 Joe, looked at a couple of the plans. And uh, one, I guess, that's being recommended would effectively remove three spaces. But, three and a half, okay, sixty-eight feet.
Smart car, it still fit.
But basically enough that cars coming up uh would permit one car to pull to the side, the other car to go straight. So you should at least be able to avoid the situation which currently occurs, where one of the other cars has to actually back up, right? Right, I'm having, right, having said that, I will say my own personal view is, oh, first of all, I'm, I'm certainly very supportive of this. It's a no regrets action, it's costing the town nothing to do this. Um, and I fully will, but I will also endorse what, what Howard said, that from the point of view of the residents. This needs to be married up with a speed bump, so that, this is a combined package and I I strongly encourage the council to think of it that way. Um, uh, but um, I'm, I'm not as, I'm not as convinced that it. Ness- I, I think it takes, addresses an enormous safety problem because a car is being able to have more space to get. You know, move around each other. Um, with with no, no parking in those three spots. I'm not as convinced that it fully addresses the visibility issue per se, just from having stood there and watched the traffic. Uh, so I'm very comfortable putting this in as a first step, but I don't know if we won't later want to ultimately consider something else. Uh, and in regard to that. When the issue, one of the issues that had concerned residents, I know it's concerned others, is that if we were to move to the physical change, which would be. Uh, uh, the the cutout, the widening of the street, which would take out the median strip between the curb and the, in the pa- and the, and the sidewalk. Uh, with how many trees would have to come down? And um, uh, Talbert has been there and and looked at the trees. And there are, if you think about it, there are three at the cusp of the hill, and if you are starting on the side of. Maple or Oak Ridge and you're walking toward east, okay, so you come to tree one, two, and three. Tree two is a tiny sapling, it doesn't really count at all. Tree one is moderately substantial, but not a, not a hundred-year canopy tree, but probably a thirty, forty-year tree. The uh, tree three is actually the largest of the three trees. But that's the one that Talbert believes is damaged and probably within a few years will have to come down. Uh, so it occurs to me that, that if we put in this. Solution now and see how it wo- works. Potentially, if and when Talbert decides anyway the tree has to come down, that opens up an opportunity for widening the street without. Being the cause of taking down a tree, now you couldn't plant another tree in that specific location, but nonetheless. You would not be causing a canopy tree to come down if you took that at that time, because the tree would have to come down for health reasons anyway. So, but in any event, to the point of tonight, um, uh, as the liaison to the committee, I I basically endorse the view that. That taking advantage of the opportunity from the residents to uh take out three, three and a half spaces. Uh, and put in two speed bumps is a good uh solution for the moment and see how it works. If it works perfectly or really takes care of it, great, if it doesn't, then we ought to be prepared to consider something else.
And how will that be measured, just by complaints, or like, is there a more quantitative or or objective measure to to see if it's successful or not?
As a politician, complaints.
Everyone feels that, that their s- street is the one that everyone speeds by and um. And, you know, that may or may not be true depending on the lived experience, so. I'm just wondering if there is a way to set some metrics to determine whether this is something that would be a successful approach. Even for the future, even, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Forty miles, forty miles an hour, two cars approaching at twenty miles an hour is pretty fast on the hill, yeah.
All right.
It could go away if we put, we get the authority for these speed cameras, man, we could just. On every, every street.
Yeah, I I would make the recommendation that we put this for a public hearing next month. But ask for a precise locate, proposed location of two speed bumps to go with it as well as the precise location of. Well, that's, you did, you showed that, that's right, that, I was in the back, I, I, I apologize, but that would be, that's what we would be putting out for the public hearing.
So, when I looked at that, um. This, this part, right, so you have a walkway that goes to where the speed hump would be, is that something that? I know, I know it isn't a driveway, but I'm just, it just seemed a little awkward to me, so I didn't know if that ever counts, like. Someone's front walk is is kind of going straight to the, to the speed hump. I guess we'll just see what people say when, when it.
Yeah. It it it's, it's a tough spot, there's not really a better option if we're gonna put a speed bump down there. And and have the desired effect of slowing cars down as they approach the crest, that's.
I, so we had the earlier speed hump discussion, right, so. I don't know who lives at this particular home, but if they're, you know, being dropped off where the walkway is.
This is the problem we're having at seven thousand two.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yeah, so, okay.
I I think to your, your point, Irene, it's gonna be resident feedback, will 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 tell us.
What's going on.
There are not a lot of places and the residents really wanted to speed bump, so, you know, something has to give.
Right.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, that, then that was the discussion we had, like, we, we gotta come to some consensus here, else. You you know, we're not gonna make substantial process, progress. Right, there is, there is no perfect, yeah, there is no perfect, if there was a perfect solution, it probably would have been done well before our time.
Okay.
Right, you, when you talk about these cutouts. After you've done the cutout, is that just for parking?
Yes.
So you.
Right. Would still allow parking in that, in that cutout.
And what Joe has represented is that you could.
Cars to the cutout.
The cutouts would still lose two parking spaces where it curves, right? And then you can, and then you park on the flat spot. That's transition.
But what Joe said, said is that you could have a park, car parked. If, if they had the cutout feet, the added feet of the cutout, a car could park and that would still leave two full lanes traffic.
And the trees.
Right.
Because you.
Well, depending on.
That was the idea.
Right.
Yeah. So are we, uh, in agreement to have this for a public hearing next?
Yeah.
I, I think so.
It's all going to be speed humps next. That's a third speed hump. Just saying.
Well, you might as well get them all done, so they can all be built at the same time.
I don't think it's a bad thing that everyone's going to be hearing each other's, but I don't want it to be pylon either.
Well, it's interesting, the maple, the maple, you got the maple request out of this whole effort because it was the December meeting that all the maple residents came and complained about the speed. And we educated them and said, hey, there is a process if you want, you know.
Okay.
Yes, that's exactly how it happened.
That's interesting.
So that's not a coincidence.
Okay.
Timing is not a coincidence.
Rich, your, uh, your, your, your mic's not on.
And the no parking and the speed humps.
Yes, he took care of it. Thanks.
What is the process we, don't we have to, what do we have to do to authorize speed humps without it having gone through the process that we have for speed up? I think maybe, I think I answered my, I think we, we have, we have.
Put in the speed.
Yeah, we always have to have a public hearing if that's what you mean.
No, I, I was just saying arbitrarily that.
Right. We're, the PSC is making a recommendation in lieu of the residents putting together a petition and doing the study.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And in the speed hunt policy, I think I remember putting something.
We're essentially setting it aside. We, we have the right to waive the obligations, the requirements of the speed hunt policy for special, for, for reasons.
I think we wrote it in.
That's, that's what we, then we wrote that flexibility into.
Yeah.
Yeah, town council can put, put that request in.
So, so no, we don't need to have the data as we've collected on Maple for the, on Stanford Hill because of the special circumstances of Stanford Hill.
All right. Third, third speed hump vote's going to be wonderful. And we are going to have to set aside a little. That's right. It'll be a Wednesday anyway. Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry, Todd.
Bear with me just one second. I'm reviewing the speed on policy. Council may direct the town manager to perform a feasibility analysis for the installation of a speed hump in any street segment within the town. Directed by the county council will evaluate the street segments to identify and recommend appropriate locations of any.
Isn't that feasibility analysis already being done by Joe?
Yes, but the traffic analysis review isn't.
I'm going to, I'm going to go back. Yeah, you need, we need to read it. I, I'm going to go back and read it too. Cause I, I specifically remember when we did it. We, we worded it so that the town, the town council could take its own action. I have to go back and look. Yeah, but I have to, I have to go back and look specifically.
Well, Todd will keep us honest here. It's either going to be May or June.
Actually, Howard wrote the speed hunt policy, so he should. We, 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 we did. Yeah, yeah.
I, I hope we could take this up next month and actually get both these things.
Joe, is Joe still there?
Yes.
Joe is still here.
Aren't we relying on speed data from a previous speed study for your review here? Or, or I thought that I understood that that was the case.
For Stanford.
Stanford Street?
Correct. There was a speed study.
Yes. Um, okay, this is.
It's okay.
I hope, I, I hope, I don't step on, on any toes with this, but.
On any toes. I'll check on and report back to the council. Thanks.
All right. Um, the, uh, the, the speed, the speeds on Stanford Street that we recorded were, would not, as you say, we, 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 we would not have enough to just, we wouldn't have enough to justify speed homes. It, uh, and.
But that comes back to the council. We can override it.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. So.
I think Todd has made, so the predicates have been undertaken before we would be able to provide a waiver, basically.
Okay.
But the justification is not there on the basis of the speed data. It's.
That we have currently, but we could, yeah, I'll, I'll take a look at it and report back to you.
Our new, our new equipment could do another, another, uh, study.
Yes, that's. We can do it very quickly.
Sorry, Joy, did you have another? Okay. Are we good to move, move forward, please? The proposed elimination of reversible lanes in Rock Creek Park. So this is obviously not within the town, not even within the county. But it's something that's put forth because there's an understanding that a lot of town residents could be utilizing these lanes and reversible lanes, the, the, the policy that currently exists to come to and from work in, in DC. So the proposal in front of National Park Service is to eliminate these reversible lanes. And, and what has, what we've been asked as a town council is should we kind of weigh in in terms of on behalf of residents about this particular issue? And, uh, or, and/or the discussion being, you know, learning a little bit more about the facts and saying, hey, keep in mind that you're not creating problems on side streets kind of thing, which is I think a huge concern, at least of the outcry of, um, reaction from this proposal. So I may not have summarized it very well. So if anyone would like to.
I think it went up to Howard.
There you go. All right.
Hello again, Howard Burkhoff, Chair of PSC. I am very concerned about this. I asked to bring on the, on the agenda topic. Cause I, I, I'm one of those town residents that rely on the reversible lanes during rush hour. And anecdotally, uh, uh, for, right now, today, I will tell you, since the return to office, traffic has gotten a lot worse. So my, my commute every day has increased 25, 30%, sometimes worse. And I see it, um, it, it's a significant issue. When the, the analysis that NPS has used a base on, their justification was done in 2022, right during the height of COVID when everybody was teleworking. So the data is completely flawed, um, to start with. So that's, that's pretty frustrating. So it's not taking into account the return to office. Um, and additionally, again, I, I, anecdotally, I, because I know exactly when the, the lanes reverse back and forth. So I have, I've been on the other side just after the lanes go back to two-way. And it's, 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 it's a 10-minute impact, right? Ten, you know, 10 minutes, but I, I know on commute it, it adds up. So, um, I, I believe that on behalf of the town residents, I, I was asking if the town council would be willing to put in a, a letter to NPS, you know, citing concerns about, uh, the reversible, uh, their proposed elimination of reversible lanes. I looked at some of their other mitigation options with traffic circle and adding another lane. I, you know, those are good, but I don't, I personally don't believe that's going to move the needle. If they, if they remove the reversible lanes, I think they're, I, I really, it's going to impact a lot of the residents.
I can't even imagine the traffic that having only one lane going in on rush hour or coming out on rush hour. It would.
Horror show.
Would be a horror.
Right.
I, well, as somebody who also uses that traffic pattern to get downtown from here every day, I wholeheartedly support the town doing this. I would actually, since you're here and with the PSC, something that I've been very focused on is, you know, the, the city never, also never returned to rush hour lanes on Connecticut Avenue.
Right.
Which makes it ridiculous getting to and from downtown from here. And fine, you know, they've also toyed with bike lanes, which I'm a big biker. I'm in favor of it, but we do have the Crescent Trail right here and other ways that you can get north, south. Something that really bought, this is such a small thing. I don't know if this has come up, but it really affects traffic is the streetery that is still in front of Rosemary's Cafe in Van Ness. And I know that it's been a topic of petitions among the residents in Van Ness, some supporting it, but it sounds like more wanting it gone. It's not even particularly attractive. And the city has declined to take action, even though their permit has expired to make them take it down. And I would actually really encourage, if we're going to just address traffic, asking the city to actually enforce their, the end of the permit for that street or whatever and take it down. Because it, it, traffic noticeably slows as you get to that area where everyone has to go around it.
Yep. Absolutely true. Yeah. I, I should add, I'm sorry, Irene, there, there is a public comment period that ends, uh, May 2nd.
For the Rock Creek.
For the Rock Creek. Wanted to just add that.
Yeah. Would you be willing to draft a letter for us?
Sure.
So this happened because there's a concern about increased head-on collisions. Like, is this the reason that?
There's, I, Howard, I believe there's an ulterior motive that they want to, um, eliminate the overtime for the police officers. The, the cost, it's a cost issue.
Yeah, that is, that is a problem right now with the billion dollar.
Right.
Short.
It's a cost savings measure. I, I believe that's the underlying issue. They, they've come up with reasons saying, uh, well, we want to make Rock Creek more beautiful and I, some other bogus nonsense that they've come up with. And, and then they use outdated data that is not relevant and they cherry pick data on accidents and stuff like that. But, um, it, it's really a cost savings.
As you, as you think about writing a letter for us, one of the things is just the environmental impact for the, the ecosystem that it would create with the backup of traffic there with the cars spewing.
Right.
You know, stuff out and killing the, killing the vegetation.
Right.
I mean, it's another thing that you think the National Park Service would be concerned about.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
So I am trying to, to understand this. If, if comments are due May 2nd, first, are we all in agreement that we do want a letter drafted? Because we would not be able to, it's April 7th, 16th. So I'm just trying to see how all this fits. Fast, you're right, but then we, you know, in terms of, of chat discussion to make sure, you know, I, I just don't know. First of all, are all of us on the same page about drafting something?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, I don't know. I don't feel I know enough about the other side. In other words, I, I take your point that it could well be a budgetary issue. And certainly, in fact, in the little I read about it, they did acknowledge that all those cops every day pulling barriers on and off. You know, it's, it's a cost. And it doesn't mean there aren't other ways that it could be done. It could be.
That's right.
Yes, it can be electronic.
The other is, uh, and, and I certainly do enjoy when I've used it, having the extra lane. But I also will feel sometimes pretty frightened about how close you are to the cars going in the other direction without having any median or barrier between the different lanes of traffic. Anyway, I, I'm just saying that there's, there is, there are at least considerations on the other side. Having said that, I'm certainly comfortable having the council put in a letter to the point that, that, we are very concerned about the additional backup of traffic that would arise from this change and want to know how they're truly planning to address it and keep it.
I mean, it would, it would cost them nothing to reopen the rush hour flow on Connecticut Avenue if they're looking for a budget reduction, which would take some of the pressure off of.
Which, which, by the way, they handled without cops before too.
That's what I'm saying.
Joy, are you okay with the, okay? How quickly could you put a letter together?
Just give me the weekend if that's okay.
Yeah. All right.
That's what, when I do all my.
The process begins.
I don't think it'll be a problem for us to.
Doesn't need to be. A missive, it's just, you know.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. All right.
Appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I wish I did thank you, Todd, for raising the issue about the policy. It looks to me like by the policy is necessary to.
By the policy is necessary to do another speed, speed study on the hill.
Correct.
And then the council can override that or override the conclusions from it if they feel they're mitigating circumstances.
That's correct. Yeah, that's right. Um, I just need to, I, I believe when I spoke to Dave before, he, he's off this week. But before he left, I believe they're relying on a speed study that wasn't done too long ago. So I just need to learn when that was done or, or if we need to do a new one.
So if that's recent enough, then we wouldn't have to do it again. Okay.
Could I, at this point, insert the, the last issue about just the parking, just to give the quick, quick update or do you want?
No, no, go for it.
Just very quickly, just added to the agenda for the benefit of my colleagues on the council. The, uh, the staff has undertaken the study of the, uh, of the, of the permitted parking along the west side of town and done a very careful granulated job, granular job of that. And, um, the, uh, they were just finalized the spreadsheet a couple of days ago, but I can send it around to everybody. But what it really shows, we're really bearing down on a very specific point, which is the main one that been raised by those residents, which is a combination of two factors at the same time. One is that most of the spaces are taken. So there's, there really is a jam up in that block. And that a material number of people who are parking are town residents, but not adjacent to that, uh, to, to, on, on, you know, to that block. Uh, and, and having looked at probably there are 15 or so blocks that were looked at in detail, three different times. On weekday morning, a weekday afternoon, on a week end. So out of all those blocks, there are exactly two where the issue really exists. But it exists. It's very clear that these are blocks that are right at the, uh, the, the corner of Elm, it's Elm. And just before you get to Elm Street Park and the block on 46 between Elm and Willow, which is what you'd expect. Those are the blocks. People parking there have the least distance to walk. So, uh, and there is an issue. And, and what we'd like to do is, uh, have it go back to the PSC to get their review of that data and make a recommendation back to the council.
Yeah. And I, I, you can almost guess that that was the choke point.
Right. But we didn't know how extensive it could be.
Yeah. And I, and I do want the PSC to take a look. It's the issue that I've raised before, which is what can those houses accommodate parking on their own property? Because I, I feel that these are town streets. Town residents ought to have a right to park on them reasonably. And if, if they're complaining and they're not utilizing the spaces on their own property, then it becomes an, an issue of we have to decide whether or not we want it to burden the rest of the town with not being able to park there versus their convenience of parking on this street and using a, their front door immediately rather than going into their driveway, parking on their driveway and coming around to their front door. So I, I just, I, I, I'm going to clear my thoughts on it so that you can think about that as well.
Thank you. Thank you for raising that. You know, we, it is a fair point to consider. Absolutely. The only thing I wanted to raise in terms of schedule, it goes back to you, Todd. When, 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 if, if there were to be any suggested change for parking regulations, when, what's the schedule? We'd have to be on to meet the fact, I think it's September that you're putting out a new set of permits.
Correct. Yeah, September.
So any decision the council took prior to September would be good enough for you? Or do you need a leave, you know, lead time?
It would be subject to a public hearing. So the council would have to discuss it in May, hold a public hearing in June, likely in order for us to be able to process the permits in time for distribution in September.
Yeah, it's not, we aren't going to get.
So even if it was a July meeting that had the public hearing, that wouldn't be enough time?
Wouldn't that be enough? You could, if you, you could even delay the permits by a month if you had to, right?
Right. It all depends upon what the recommendation from the PSC will be. Whether it be a special permit parking area or the like, but we, we will evaluate it and I'm sure we could probably make it work.
Okay.
Todd, just confirming, I have it on the agenda for this coming Monday. So I expect I'll be coming, I'll be here next month and presenting our recommendation.
Okay. But it, it could take a while to work through. So that's why I want to make sure we, it might take more than one meeting to get to all of this. So, okay. Thank you. That's it.
And that also brings up the question of the kind of parking capacity study that, um, we asked the town staff about, like, you know, to your point, Rich, what, what is out there right now and, and what can be accommodated, if you will, reasonably accommodated? If it's two, two, uh, two spaces per household in their driveway or whatever, just have a back of envelope.
Right.
Type of thing. I don't know where that is in terms of process, but we'll follow up on that.
We were thinking about that in light of the zoning text amendments and.
Correct. But it did just have a baseline.
But it's just a baseline.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Um, everything good on that? Okay. Uh, the county workforce housing legislation, as you all know, we had a, uh, a, a meeting with Councilmember Fritzen in, in, uh, Town Hall on Monday. Um, wasn't, I wouldn't say a full house or standing room only. It was, uh, you know, uh, maybe 40, 40 people in total between online and, and in person. And, uh, but yet a, a good discussion. Everyone, um, had an opportunity to ask their questions. The, after the discussion, um, uh, Councilmember Fritzen's Chief of Staff, Cindy Gibson, came up to me and said that there's, there's answers to all the questions that we had posed in, in our testimony back, uh, in March when we, uh, when I provided testimony about this ZTA. And we're going to be meeting to go over these answers to make sure it's actually fully answering the question before we release all that information and make sure it's complete for, for folks to, um, to have all the information. So that's the only update I really have on this. I understand that there, the next work session by the, uh, Planning Housing and Parks Committee, uh, will be in June. Um, and I don't know what the schedule is to, uh, to vote on this, um, after that. So any questions or, uh, the technical. Yeah. So the question asked by, um, what is your name? Sorry? Woodside Place, uh, sorry, Millie. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Westneck. Um, so your, the question that, uh, was posed was, uh, the idea of combining a lot, one that is considered to be an eligible lot on Connecticut Avenue as designated, um, via the interactive map that was produced by the county with a lot behind it. Um, an interior, we'll call that an interior lot. That question was asked. Um, it is not the council member's intention to allow such combinations. Um, but the other part of that question is could, could you allow combinations occur when both lots are on Connecticut Avenue? Um, and, and that is still up for discussion. The lot, that is not his intention. However, uh, but the way the ZTA currently reads, the language within the zoning text amendment, the legal language, it's not, needs to be clarified as such. So it was, his intent is not for that kind of combination to occur. However, that's not what's currently stated. So there would need to be an amendment. We have, we absolutely have. Yes, we have in, in the testimony that I provided. I, I understand. I'm just saying to you that we have provided our testimony to say that we don't want any sort of combinations, lot combinations occurring. Um, period, actually. Um, but again, that's all discussions that will take place. Um, again, the next time that the, the County Council Committee that. I, I'm sorry. This is, this is just an update for us. I, I wish you would have come to the Monday session with council. Uh, oh, okay. It wasn't clear to you. Okay. I see, I see. I understand. We can talk, we can talk afterwards. Yeah, don't, we'll talk afterwards, after this meeting. So. Yeah, yeah, it's only gonna be a few more minutes. No problem. Um, uh, unless my colleagues have any questions on any of that. Okay. The next item is the technical amendment. Um, so, uh, as you all know, um, the technical amendment passed unanimously um, by the Senate. It was, it was one vote, vote short on the House, but unanimous on the Senate side. Uh, and went straight to the governor on, uh, April the 4th. Uh, when a piece of legislation goes to the governor before the end of the session and the, the session ended on April the 7th, the governor has six days minus Sundays, um, to respond in terms of a veto. That six days ended on April 11th. No veto. Uh, so this, it does not need to, per Maryland law, you don't have to have every bill signed by the governor um, in order for it to take effect, right? So the big stuff, this was a local bill, this was a clarification bill. Um, so for all intents and purposes, the technical amendment is, uh, is, uh, passed. And for everyone here, what that means is that municipal, not just us, not just the town Chevy Chase, but municipalities that do not have zoning authority within, um, uh, Montgomery County are able to regulate uh, multifamily properties up to four units. So our heights setbacks, all the other building regulations that we currently have in place and are able to, um, uh, pass when it's a single-family home will continue, not only for that, but also uh, whatever passes in terms of zoning changes in the future up to four units. Once it hits five units, um, then there's a whole other set of discussions that, that take place, but that, that's where we are right now. So, uh, that's a good thing.
That's a great thing. Uh, and you've done tremendous work, Irene, to make that happen. So a lot of credit to you. Um, I would encourage there at least be a town crier to make sure that this is clear. You can't rerun this commercial too often.
This is true.
Um, and, and I'd also recommend that in the reporter that comes out on this meeting, that also provides some more detail about what this really means and not just refer as the author to, you know, say what's really going on here. Cause it really is a big deal for the town. So that's great. Thank you.
Good, 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 good suggestions. Uh, Bethesda Market Park?
Nothing to say. There's still, the, the developer did have some comments on the last version, has sent them back to the county attorney, uh, or sent them back to the county, the county, and they've been forwarded to the county attorney. I tried to find out today, uh, from my contact at the Department of Transportation, um, where it stood with them, but I haven't heard anything back. So I don't have anything further to report. Uh, just that, you know, this should be very close, but we've heard that for a long time. So.
Yeah, it's been very close for six months. Um, Bethesda Downtown Minor Master Plan Amendment. Um, once again, we, we testified and the, uh, County Council approved unanimously the minor master plan amendment, including removing the development cap. But one of the things that they did add in, uh, and it was not just the town that asked for this, it was also the IAC, the Implementation Advisory Committee that are, one of our residents is co-chair, if not chair of, um, is to add a five-year comprehensive review of the plan. Uh, so that's wonderful. They heard us, they heard other voices as well. Um, it wasn't specifically noted what's in this comprehensive plan, but the fact that they use the word comprehensive review, hopefully they'll take that into account. So when, uh, I do get a chance to meet with, uh, Councilmember Fritzen's Chief of Staff, I'll try and find out a little bit more about what that means. Cause the next one won't be until 2030. Um, so we'll, we'll figure out then. And the idea again was to figure out with all the different metrics, quality of life, what does it actually on the ground mean in terms of school enrollments and, and traffic and parks and everything else in between? Is it actually achieving the goals that's been set aside? So we got that in there and, uh, that's another success. So, yes, Joy.
Yeah, I just want to compliment the Long Range Planning Committee members for, um, contributing a long list of reasonable metrics upon which to judge the success and progress against the, um, downtown plan. So.
Yeah, excellent point. Yeah. Great. With that, I, unless others have.
Yeah, one, one other.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, streetlights. Oh, don't look at me like that, Seth. That's not fair. John and, and Rich and I have been, uh, and mostly John, uh, have been paying attention to the prospect of potentially swapping out the lights in our town, or 300, uh, streetlights with LED lights. And, uh, the net of it is that, uh, Pepco has revised the prospective tariffs. We've done some numbers, uh, and essentially, um, just on a straight basis of economics, it still does not make sense to do it. Uh, in other words, if we, if we went to the LED system and there are various ways it could be done, uh, but if we simply still want Pepco to do it all, we would end up paying about, we pay about $60,000. Thirty or $40,000 a month, right? In our electric bill?
No, our monthly electric bill.
Oh, no, I was, I said, it's.
Four thousand.
I'm sorry, man. It's a $50,000 a year for electricity.
Yeah.
It would cost us about another $12,000 a year if we, to, to go to LED, right? So to, to go to a system that consumes less electricity would cost us $12,000 a year more. There is another alternative where we would pay a substantial amount of capital costs upfront. We looked at those numbers and it's still unlikely to make pure economic sense. Um, so if, there's nothing here for the town to look at, for us to look at right now. But, um, I will make just a couple of observations. Rich and John, if you wish to say anything else, please add. I, the, the thought is that Pepco has not yet submitted these numbers as a tariff proposal to the PUC. So we've asked, maybe, John, do you have an answer if there's still an opportunity for us to comment further?
I don't know yet.
Okay. Uh, but, uh, I think we could well wish to put in a letter to the effect of saying to the PUC that in all reasonableness, municipalities should be given the option that they could get, achieve, achieve a substantial reduction in electricity consumption and ultimately have a project that actually pays a return at the same time. In other words, we shouldn't have to pay for the privilege of consuming less electricity. Uh, so that would basically try to put further pressure to reduce the tariff rates and potentially actually make it a sensible deal for us to do. Um, the other part of it is however, that we probably would never want a solution that actually has the town take over ownership of the system. That's not something we'd want. But this in, in-between route would allow us to make a capital contribution. But Pepco would still do the operation and take care of the maintenance and so forth. But we want to make sure even that would actually make economic sense and it doesn't yet.
Right. I, one of the things that we ought to understand is that the streetlights that we have are going away. They're gonna, as they, as they degrade and burn out, Pepco automatically places them with LED. So at some point in time, no, I mean, no, they will, well, that's the part of this tariff is we are gonna have to decide what schedule on the tariff that we want to be on. So it, 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 it's not as if we're not gonna have to make a decision. We're gonna have to make a decision at some point. It's just not immediate. So.
John, is there anything else you want to stress?
Just that we're still, still, uh, learning. We've been doing this since 2022. So it's a long game. And they're, they're.
Utilities redefine the term all deliberate speed.
It's a long game and the example of the tariffs not being ready yet is another example of, well, you can't answer all the questions. You need to make an informed decision because the tariffs aren't in place. Um, but we're doing our due diligence. We'll continue to do so. But, um, again, since 2022 and we know more now, we have peers in this game with the village in section five and whatnot. But we just need to, we, we need to wait for it to mature. It's got a very long gestation period. So.
One other thing that we could ask for is a demonstration, uh, to have two or three, they, they would, they would put in LEDs in two or three lights, uh, two or three poles in a row, so that residents could actually get a feel for what it's like to stand under these things. Now, one of the, Pepco is not offering a variety of different options for color and heat, which I guess should be available, but they have it's like Model T4s, you could have any color you want as long as it's black, right? Um, so, uh, but, but at least it would give residents a chance to actually experience what it's like, whether they like the color and the feel of the light.
Did you buy the one I already bought? I found it here.
We do have one in town. We just don't know where it is.
I know the crosswalk on Connecticut. Should be the LED.
Connecticut or what?
Is that, uh, that crossing about halfway, there's a, there's one that goes way across the road. I believe that's LED. That's not a safe flight to withstand that.
All right, that's it.
We're good. Okay. Well, as you can tell, it's been a very busy month for our town. Um, we encourage everyone listening in and those later, uh, to come to the annual meeting on May 6th, where we'll report on all the stuff that we've done throughout the year and, and also go over the budget uh, for next year. And with that, I thank you all. It went, ran way over. Um, but I think we all had some good discussions tonight. So.
Nothing you could have done about.
Well, let's see. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.